Correct, and we can do that because where you have. Then you require mail.
There's actually, you could take one of the public books if nobody took it. Just take one of the books.
All right, Shane, we are live.
We are live.
Yep.
I believe so.
All right, so before we get started here, there was the agenda, the agenda is written in the box, so you're welcome to grab one, you can follow up.
Can you make sure your mic is on so Mary can hear you?
So Mary, I just asked everybody in the audience if they wanted an agenda that they could grab one from the back. We printed agendas for everybody. So help us keep track of the meeting. Right, well, let's call this meeting to order. So today is January fourteenth, it'll be our first city council meeting of two thousand and twenty-five on the session order. We'll start out with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. All right, City Administrator, Ms. Dow, will you roll call, please?
Mayor Heaven.
Present.
Councilmember Brian.
Your.
Councilmember Glazer.
Present.
Councilmember Rainville.
Present.
Engineer Nelson.
Here.
Chief Deputy Jacobson.
Yes, ma'am.
Fire Chief Miller.
Here.
Assistant Michelle Greiner. And Assistant Alexis Johnson.
Present.
And myself, your interim City Administrator Natalie Johnson.
Thank you, Natalie. All right, so first topic is to approve the agenda. Let's follow me to motion to approve the agenda. Say that again.
The floor item.
No, I didn't hear.
Floor item, number two.
We should do the agenda first, though.
Okay.
And then consent. That's what we've always done it, yeah.
You've done it both ways, I just whatever.
Just going off the current agenda that was.
That's what I'm going off of too, but that's okay.
We might have two separate copies, is that what we're saying?
Go ahead.
All right, so prove the agenda, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, oh, Councilmember, please go ahead.
I would like to amend the agenda.
Would like to amend the agenda.
I would propose moving number eight, planning and zoning update, to the consent agenda. And number ten, under old business, city council, old business, number eight. I would say we direct staff to implement the policy previously agreed upon by city council. I'm unable to find a location to put that in policy. Our policy, the council policy states its directions to council, this is direction to staff to provide direction to the consultants.
So, Councilmember Rainville is proposing moving planning and zoning, which is number eight, and then number ten for the city council, new business, number eight. Can you read number eight on what it says for yours, Mary? Because I'm tracking city council priorities and goal lists. Is that what yours reflects?
No.
Oh, in the old business, that's what I missed.
So ten B eight.
Ten B eight, I missed the E portion of it. Okay, so Mary, are you making a motion to move, move those two items?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to still understand what we're, what we're trying to move.
Okay, so I will go back, let me paraphrase it again. So Councilmember Rainville is asking to move number eight, which is the planning and zoning monthly report. And then go to number ten B, under old business, number eight. She's asking him to move them to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Under old business. Councilmember Rainbow, go ahead.
Just to clarify, that ten B eight is just to remove it off the agenda. But direct staff to follow through with council direction.
Okay, so to clarify one more time. So Councilmember Rainville is proposing or making a motion to remove planning or move planning and zoning to the consent agenda. And remove item ten B, number eight. And change it to the direction that you have on here, no update from the, from Councilmember Rainville, but it's to remove it and staff will be directed by the city council.
Right.
Right.
Is there any other recommended, recommendations or changes to the agenda? We're gonna get Dan just a minute here.
And, okay, well, I'm good.
Okay, is there a second? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I apologize, but because Mary is not here, we can't, we have to do.
We have to do a roll call vote.
Okay, and I don't know what that means.
You call on each and then they answer verbally.
Okay, that's the roll call.
And Natalie knows it either way.
Okay, so we are gonna move to a roll call vote, so I have to call each one. Councilmember, please.
Aye.
Councilmember Brian.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
And I am also an aye, so motion carries. We don't have any nays. Okay, so moving into the agenda, then. The next step is the public forum, so do we have anybody that has signed up to speak?
We, we're gonna bring up the sheet.
Okay, so anybody that is going to speak, I would ask that you keep it to the three minutes, you would first state your name and your address where you live. But thank you, Brian. All right, looks like we have, this is the, all right, Renee Heaven, you're on here to sign up to speak, are you speaking tonight? You signed the wrong sheet, I'm gonna bet. All right, next one. Andy Schrader from Rum River Consultants.
Apologies, I was trying to sign.
The other sheet, okay. And Cheryl Maddie Olson, would you like to speak? Okay, ma'am.
There you go, can you hear me? Is it green on me? Yeah, it's green. Cheryl Maddie Olson, and I live at seventy-four seventeen Norris Lake Road, in now then. I'd like to speak just a little bit about how the council has been trying to handle the vacancy on the city council board. In December, at the council meeting, then Mayor Pelon was trying to fill the vacancy for an interim spot. While they figured out, while they were trying to figure out the council, what was going to do for the two-year, two-month period at that time. But at the meeting, Mayor Pelon said the word until, and no one understood it, to tell, to be till, that we have a special election. If you go back and watch it on the YouTube, the council meeting, it's at about like seven fifty-four, eight oh seven PM that he states this. He did not want to fill it for the full term, because it is a long time, it's two years. Why should one city council get to choose over the other city council? This is an elected position, not a job, where one person just gets to choose, or three people get to choose, or that sits on for that position. Just like all of you, the three of you, and Mary also, you had to campaign, you have to go see the constituents, it's, it's I feel greatly patriotic about that because of that we have the right to vote. What else, what else? I would also like to need to, that you have to post that position, that's what Natalie had said. And you've not, the council has not said, hey, we're gonna post this. It was just done, it wasn't that they voted on it or anything. And then you have to wait thirty days till then. I was also told that you have to have an ordinance to have the election, because right now it's only in November. So you'd have to change an ordinance in order to have a special election. So there's certain things we have to do, because this has never happened to now then before, so. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So that will be addressed in new council business, number ten, sub number ten. All right, so we're moving on, moving to the consent agenda. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda at all? Or do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
Say again, Dan.
I'll move, I'll make that motion to approve the consent agenda as I'm. I'll second.
All right, thank you very much, all in, oh, I can't do that. All right, so we'll do a roll call vote, council, councilperson, please.
Aye.
Councilperson, please.
Aye.
Councilperson, Rainville.
Aye.
All right, and I am also an aye, so we don't have any nays, motion carries. So moving on, the next one is, I would like to spend a few minutes and address the residents of now then, so. How are we doing back there? All right, so one, I'm very, very pleased that the residents of now then chose me to lead the city. As the mayor and council, and I put I we, because I don't have buy-in from everybody. And we haven't had time because of open meeting laws, I can't go to each one of these and talk about this specifically, so some of these I'm gonna say aye, and some of them I'm just gonna talk about. So for me personally, and I, I can imagine the council's the same way, I will work hard to gain the trust of the residents that didn't vote for me. I'll do this by leading by example, being transparent, ethical, and honest. I will lead with servant leadership that prioritizes the needs of the city over my own. This is based on the idea that people have intrinsic value beyond their work, and our staff is the backbone of our city. I personally knocked down over eight hundred doors in the residence of now then, I listened to their concerns to understand what is important to them. Many residents told me why they moved to now then, whether it's to have more property, to ride horses, to have hobby farms, and they really like our small city of now then. They want to keep it now then, they want to keep it rural. Even though our sister cities are growing at a much faster pace all around us, I also heard about some of the challenges. The lack of high-speed internet in all locations. The code compliance enforcement, the road conditions, many residents are concerned about the property tax increases. Public safety issues not being addressed, like severe weather sirens, and the high-volume well for the fire department. Significant concerns with lack of transparency, lack of accountability, and staff turnover. So our city faces some challenges, but I think these are all something that we can manage through. We're gonna address some of these challenges by creating a positive, can-do-work environment, that everyone is treated with dignity and respect, which creates a positive climate for all to interact and feel comfortable. This allows our community to come together, work professionally together, and unite as a city. I want to utilize my knowledge, skills, and ability. I have a good understanding of what leadership means, and my goal is to provide that leadership, lots of years in the service and civilian-side leadership. Utilize my education to refine some of the current procedures and make them more efficient and effective. I want to be, make sure that we, as a council, are fiscally responsible with our city's money. We want to empower our staff by providing the tools they need to do their jobs, providing clear direction, and present the city administrator with goals. Also, this means providing priorities and reprioritizing as things change. I want to build mutual trust with residents of now then, members of the city council and the city staff. I do want to set up a committee, and I don't have buy-in on this yet, but set up a committee, as there's, these were dismantled, I want to do it differently, but I would like to make sure we have community involvement. Make sure we actively listen to residents. Take responsibility and be accountable to the residents of now then. So not only take responsibility for the task focus, but be accountable on the result side of it. As a statutory city, which is also considered a weak mayor city, I am one of five currently for votes. What I can say is I will be responsible and take responsibility, responsibility for what gets done and what does not get done. I will not deflect responsibility to others. The city council, the goal is to work as a team, and I will do my best to guide this process. Many organizations have a thing they call a mission statement, they also call them a true north or a guiding statement. And for, for us, I'm proposing this statement. To lead the city by making decisions and setting policy to position now then to be successful now and for the next ten years. I want to make sure we make decisions based off of data, so we want to collect information, we want to analyze that data and make the best decision for our city. Our city council is a nonpartisan group of elected officials, and we should make decisions based off of, I'll call it the mission statement or true north, as we think about it. All council members should be working on facts and not assumptions. Take the emotion out of the meeting and use our, our guiding statement to lead the city by making decisions and setting policy to position now then to be successful now and for the next ten years. Our council should be a group of high-level policymakers to set policy, focusing on setting the policy which creates the standards and framework for now then. This also means that we're staying out of the details that don't need to be dealt with by the city council. But make sure we keep the checks and balances in place. We want to make sure we eliminate groupthink. The city council should be a group of problem solvers, they should come prepared for the meeting with their own opinions and perspectives. Also, the council members should have fully read and understand the packets. The goal is not having consensus for every vote, but to bring constructive dialogue and persuasive discussion to the meetings. Want to ensure we're compliant with the Emergency Management Statute twelve twenty-four. And I am, I'm asking our fire chief, Rob Miller, to help us get in compliance with that. We want to measure what matters, so whether it's complaints on roads or anything else that us as a city council deem important, we should measure it, we should understand it, and we should be getting better. We are financially challenged in our city, and I, I got a statement that's really important. We are financially challenged in the city of now then, in two thousand and twenty-four, we were not able to cover our expenses, we actually had a deficit that came out of the general fund of two hundred and fifty thousand, it was actually over that. And they'll do a bond and levy for that in two thousand and twenty-five. But as the budget was proposed in two thousand and twenty-four or two thousand and twenty-five, it had a nine point nine percent increase. Which will bring in an additional one hundred ninety-three thousand in revenue. This increase does not even cover the proposed deficit of seventy thousand we're gonna have in two thousand and twenty-five. So we must get out of the mindset of kicking the can down the road. Property taxes will have to increase, one, to even cover our expense of running our city. The residents that we have, like the ordinance of the two point five minimum five-acre average, but it also constrains our city's tax base. We don't have a big populace for this tax base, and, and we have to share it. So as we're projecting forward, this is what's already on the table before we even walk in on day one, but it's a ten percent proposed property tax increase every year until two thousand and twenty-nine, and that's, at that point, we can finally start saving some money. So I need everybody to understand that, our city to understand that, that we cannot keep doing what we've been doing. And then lastly, our goal is not to talk about the past, but focus on the opportunities and challenges of the future. I will ask everyone, please put a stake in the ground to try to focus on the future, no matter the challenges we have or why we're in this position. This forward-looking focus is on the future, which allows us to stay positive and move, move forward with proactive planning. And then I want to just touch base on some goals. So many have asked, what about the Met Council? Our, our goal should be to keep the Met Council out. We want to maintain our ordinance, which is so important to our city, maintaining the minimum two point five, five-acre average. We want to address how the city council meetings are running, and make sure they're efficient and effective. Moving forward, I'm gonna propose that we do two city council meetings a month, and keep them less than two hours. It'll allow us to keep this fresh in our minds and also action any time-sensitive issues. We want, we're gonna see this, Lexi's gonna, to do a PowerPoint presentation in our meeting, so we're not just reading information from a book, we're presenting information to our citizens and residents. We want to work to repair the tattered relationships with our sister cities. And this is gonna start with Rob Miller already working with the city of Ramsey to get us back on the first alarm, when there's a call that's on the border of Ramsey and now then, currently we're not. We want to review and update city ordinances at a rate as quickly as we can, that makes sense for our city. I would love to do one, one a month, but I don't think that's gonna happen, but currently, this is costing our city with consultants and attorney's fees, money that we shouldn't be spending. We want to create and implement a decision of authority matrix, which will allow our city staff to purchase budgeted items within a proposed dollar amount, and this will be one we'll talk about. Not this month, because there's too much stuff. And they don't need city council approval, so it's running like a, they're already approved, so if they're gonna spend two thousand dollars, they're already approved to spend that, they don't have to bring it to the city council to be able to ask to spend that money, they can be able to go do that and use good judgment. We want to make sure we get code compliance working, I know it, it is partially working right now, but enforcing that in Q one, two thousand and twenty-five. I put IT upgrades, but guess what? Lexi and staff already worked through this, so we have a live city council meeting, this was really important, we heard it from the residents. Live Teams meetings, and then create a mindset of continuous improvement, and this is asking the why are we doing things? I'm not gonna go into the long spiel, but what it does for us is it, we ask the question, why, why are we doing this process, and what is the best process for us? This allows us to operate efficiently and effectively. We're gonna face some headwinds, especially on the budget. But we can't kick the can down the road anymore. We want to create a strategic plan for the future of now then. Currently, the city does not have a strategic plan, we have a comprehensive plan which talks about watershed and a couple instant zoning things, we need a strategic plan, and we will do that. This also means being very proactive in our planning, which will prevent us from being reactive. And lastly, is just provide clear goals to the city administrator. All right, so that's what I got. Again, I didn't get all the council buy-in on that because of open meeting laws, I chose to not go that route. Them are some of my thoughts, some of them are ayes and some of them are wees, where I, I'm already sure that we've got some buy-in from the residents on that. Okay, let's move on. Shane, will you, let's move on to agenda item number five, which is engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so I'm just gonna start off with just a brief, a brief overview of the city's pavement management program, so our pavement management program really consists of three main items or main activities, so on roads that have entirely failed, consists of like a full reconstruction or a full-depth reclamation, that's where you have to completely go in, grind up the surface, maybe do some subgrade work, maybe do some drainage work. Those are our most expensive projects and our longest projects, and those are the kind of projects that we're gonna try to avoid. Because there is more costs associated with them, and they're also inconvenienced to our residents. The second item would be structural improvements, that's what we're gonna talk about tonight. And that consists of a overlay, a two-manus overlay, usually inch and a half or two inches thick. And what that does is it provides additional strength to the roadway, and it extends that service life of the pavement by at least another ten years. Ten years is kind of our, our mid-dot guidance, but we see in practice, that's usually closer to fifteen, so for a fraction of the cost, we can do an improvement to improve the ride, improve the surface, and actually extend that life by another ten or fifteen years. And then our, our third item is our routine maintenance, the city generally does crack filling every other year, and that's something that Joe and his crew generally handle. But in addition, we may occasionally do micro-surfacing of a street or, or restriping, something like that. And, and of course, all of our, our road work is constrained by our budget. So we try to do the best that we can do every year with what we have. Originally, for two thousand and twenty-five, I had provided a recommendation to construct batuminous overlays on kind of a series of road with an estimated cost of five hundred thousand. Our budget for this year has been revised to roughly three hundred and eighty thousand. And so I've, I've revised my recommendation based on this, the new budget. And that recommendation for two thousand and twenty-five includes a batuminous overlay on Krypton Street, Lithium Street, one hundred and eightieth, one hundred and eighty-ninth lane, Pager Street, and one hundred and ninety-fourth lane. So there is a map included in your packet, if you wanna kind of get a feel for where these, where these fourways are located, they're shown in orange on the map. And again, these are roads that are in fairly decent condition, there, some of them are starting to show some isolated alligator cracking, they're gonna require some patching before we construct this overlay. But they will definitely benefit from an overlay, and again, it will extend the life of, of the pavement by another ten to fifteen years. And that's important, because that's how we, we recognize the lowest lifecycle cost, so in a, a city where, you know, budget is a, a big item, it's important to recognize the lowest lifecycle cost. And one of the ways to do that is to apply the maintenance activities at the correct time, so we can get the longest life out of our pavement. So with that, that's kind of an overview of what we have done, and if the city council is ready to move forward tonight with my recommendation, there is a resolution in your packet, ordering the preparation of a feasibility report. So right now, what we have is kind of, you know, cost per foot level data, and based on that cost per foot, you know, average cost per foot, our estimates state that is right around three hundred and eighty thousand. When you order a feasibility report, we prepare a few exhibits that can be shared with the residents. We also take a little bit closer, so instead of doing just a cost per foot, we actually try to estimate units. So tons of batuminous mixture, we might send somebody out and field measure patching areas, and kind of fine-tune those estimates a little bit. And that feasibility report will also discuss what the assessment to the residents will be if the city continues with its current assessment policy, which is fifty percent of the cost of the project to its residents. So with that, I think I'll stand for any questions, and again, there is a, a resolution in the council packet tonight for your consideration. And there is also just a tentative timeline that I prepared, just so council can get a feel for the different steps that are required in this four twenty-nine assessment project. There's a number of, number of hearings, there's advertising statutes for, you know, the, the bidding. So just those timelines, it's, it's quite a, a process, generally, six months from start to finish for a simple project and longer. uh and longer, a longer timeframe for a more involved project such as a reconstruction or full depth uh reclamation. So if that'll stand for questions, Mr. Mayor.
Alright, is there any uh questions for uh Engineer Nelson, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Mr. Nelson, um, is what is the cost of the feasibility study or is that factored into the roughly three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in cost to redo uh overlay the roads?
Uh, that that is, that's a good question. Uh, so the cost generally we spent up between twenty five and thirty hours on a relatively simple feasibility report. Uh, and so that will translate into a cost of somewhere between three and four thousand. And that generally is included in that overall project cost of three hundred and eighty thousand. It's it's a cost for the city to do the project. Uh, all the engineering costs are costs. There's uh, there's oftentimes other costs such as uh doing testing materials. Uh, sometimes we have to do soil borings. And so uh generally, when we look at project costs, it's all the project costs that go into the project. Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay, so in this case, we can, uh, we've already got an RCA for the feasibility report and overlay project. Would anybody like to motion, Mr. Mayor? Councilmember?
Right, I'll make a motion to um order the preparation of the feasibility report for the twenty twenty five overlay project uh including uh parts of Krypton, Lithium, one hundred and eighty ninth, Tiger Street and one hundred and ninety fourth lane.
For a second.
Mr. Mayor.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would second that motion.
Perfect, we got a second, second to that motion. Thank you, only because we have a delay. Councilmember Rainville. Alright, so we will do roll call. I'm gonna start with your uh Councilmember Glazer.
Aye.
Councilmember Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Alright, and I'm also an I, so motion is passed. Alright, and then sir, you said you um, you would like to be dismissed as soon as your comments are complete?
Yes, please, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, also I'll be back next month then to present that feasibility report and talk about the next steps for this project.
We're excited to be able to move forward with some of our road projects. Thank you. Alright, next up, Fire Department, Mr. Rob Miller.
Thank you, Councilman, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm the brand new fire chief for uh City of Now Then. And I come to you with uh thirty seven years of experience in the fire service. Um, I've held all positions from um firefighter to assistant fire chief along with fire marshal. So I should um have a lot of experience to bring to the city. Um, and a lot to learn from this city and this community. So to answer some of the questions of of why am, why am I here? Um, kind of live my life with if um, if I can help, I should help. Um, and I have the ability to do that. Um, after seeing the posting um a couple of times um online, I I currently live in the city of Ramsey, so I don't live far away. And I thought it'd be a uh, an opportunity for me to at least lend my experience to the to the department. So um, again, I live in the city Ramsey. I have four kids. My youngest is fifteen. Um, I have plenty of time to to dedicate to this community and to this department. What I come to this department with is a, an interest in reducing risk for our firefighters, our citizens and um our city council. And I'm gonna do that through um experienced leadership. In doing so, I want to help navigate the legal and ethical pitfalls of the emergency services, and I think that's probably my expertise that I bring to the community. So my plan for in the first sixty days is to gather as much information about the department, um, about the strengths, the weaknesses, our opportunities to improve and our threats that are out there that um we can't see currently. Um, once I, once I do that, I'd like to come back with some recommendations for the council that we can discuss either at work sessions or through memos um or at city council meetings. So um, got some good news for you guys. Um, we have a tanker update um on our truck.
Let's hear it.
Sounds like um it is in production currently. Um, it will be um finishing production um for an inspection late April and hopefully a delivery date um mid to uh mid to mid to early May is what we're uh projecting. So that's great news because we need that truck uh more than anything. Um, and then uh the monthly report for December, I wasn't here in December, but I was able to pull some numbers together for you. Um, we had twenty one responses for the fire department. Um, three were fire responses, ten were medical and eight were for miscellaneous services. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
I don't have any questions of you, but I want to tell you, thank you for one, accepting this position uh and being part of our our community. So I know you live in Ramsey, but it's just fantastic to have you on board. So thank you for bringing all your knowledge, skills and experience and signing up to this position. Look forward to working with you.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Alright.
Welcome aboard.
Mr. Mayor.
Walmart. Welcome aboard.
Yes, ma'am.
To Fire, Fire Chief Miller. Um, welcome aboard. Uh, we're glad to have you. I was part of the interview committee and um I was very impressed with your interview, your talents, the skills you could bring to our fire department. And um, so I'm very happy to have you here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Alright, so we're gonna be followed by uh the Sheriff Department update. Chief Deputy.
Yeah. Good evening. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, members of the city council, citizens of Now Then. Uh, my name is Bill Jacobson. I am the current liaison for the city of Now Then, and I serve as the chief deputy for the sheriff's office. Been here for about four years now. Um, and uh, part of my job today is to introduce um Cole, Lieutenant Cole Bangater, who's gonna be replacing me uh in my role with the city of Now Then. Um, and it's only due to the demands of my new role at the sheriff's office really limit my time, and I have responsibilities not only to Now Then, but to the seven other communities we serve. So I will just say briefly how much I've enjoyed my time here. Um, I'll still be around. Um, there'll be a transitional period uh while Cole and I are both at meetings for y'all, but um, just know that you have a wonderful city here and it has been truly uh my honor to work with you all. Um, it's been fantastic. Um, and uh I'm not, I'm not leaving because I want to, but uh unfortunately my responsibilities are that uh I probably should move on. So with that, I'm gonna introduce Cole and have him uh talk a little bit about who he is and where he fits at our sheriff's office. And then I'll uh give my report.
Hello, everyone. Hi, my name is Cole Bangater. I'm a lieutenant for the sheriff's office. I currently am assigned in our Justice Services Division, so I oversee our civil unit, our court security unit, our transport unit and our records unit. Those are my primary responsibilities. Uh, this is my first experience being a liaison, so I'll do my best to fill the big shoes that the chief has left for me. Um, looking forward to getting know all of you and uh working with the council. Uh, I've been with the sheriff's office for about eleven years now. Prior to that, I worked in Kanabak County for about three years as a deputy as well. Uh, most of my time here was spent on patrol. I was a canine handler for about six years. Uh, and then I moved up to patrol sergeant, and then I spent about a year running training for our office as well. So that's kind of the highlights of my experience here. I, most of my time on the road, I worked as a countywide, so I have spent quite a bit of time in the city prior to when we had a contract in the city. Does anyone have any questions for me?
No, thank you. Um, Chief Deputy has set some very high standards, so you got big shoes to fill.
That's what I keep hearing.
I just, I just, I just want to clarify one thing and and can you verify, is that the proper pronunciation of Kanabak County?
That's what the locals say. Everyone else called Kanabak, but the locals will tell you it's Kanabak.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Brian.
That's okay. Question, or not really a question, but a statement. When you're talking about big shoes to fill, just so you know that we have, that the the liaison from New, from Now Then not only has been promoted to chief deputy, but the prior one is also a commander, so that's big shoes to fill.
I have a lot to live up to. I know I keep hearing that.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cole. And I will say Cole is a newer lieutenant at our sheriff's office, but he has been a highly respected member of our command team. I trust him and I trust his opinion and I trust um that he without a doubt will be a commander here someday. And um, I know that you all be in good hands. So uh, moving on to the report for December of twenty twenty four. Uh, we had a total of one hundred and fourteen calls for service. Um, that wraps up our calls for service for twenty twenty four. Pretty steady, we're down forty calls, but that's within sort of normal, um, normal ups and downs of our annual call volume. I'll touch on a few um, few things that have changed over the last year though. Um, last month, we had four calls to bar none, which is an improvement. That's nice to see. Four alarm calls, twenty one medicals and twelve animal complaints. I will touch again on some of the, some of the issues we're facing at bar none. As we closed out the year, we ended with one hundred calls even at the campus. Um, that's a significant increase. Uh, the year before we had thirty one calls, so we're looking at over a two hundred percent increase. That's been a trend that we have talked with their leadership and city leadership quite a bit. And um again, as I've mentioned before, they're, they're absolutely willing to meet with the city leadership. Uh, we're, we're willing to be at the table to help try to solve some problems there as well. So a couple of those calls from uh last month, on the sixth at one forty nine PM, um as we do from time to time, we responded to a mental health crisis. We were able to help to get that juvenile some help. Um, on the twelfth at eleven twelve PM, we responded on a disorderly conduct. Uh, three juveniles uh uh not following uh facility rules. Deputies got there, things were calm. Um, they were able to mediate it without any charges, which was good. And then on the thirtieth, five nineteen PM, we responded to an assault report uh of a juvenile struck in the head by a basketball. Deputies responded there, they investigated. It looked like it was actually not an intentional act, so um no charges, but that that young man did need some medical care. And then on the thirtieth, we responded to a fight. Um, that involved uh three juveniles, one was injured and transported to a hospital for care. And then our deputies did issue citations for two for misdemeanor assault. Some other incidents from around the city from last month on the second at four eleven PM. We responded to a theft report. It actually turned out to be a fraud report. This is a trend um that we're seeing more and a scam we're seeing more of. Um, basically, the the victim received a phone call and uh this person was claiming to be a family member, saying that they had been arrested and they required cash bail. Um, in this situation, um, if you're ever not sure that you're talking to the real police, uh, we encourage all the citizens, you can hang up. If you're not sure it's the real police, you can hang up and you can call us back. Um, our dispatch number uh in an emergency, of course, is always nine one one, but a good number for everyone to save, save it in your phone, write it down. Seven six three, four two seven, one two one two. Again, seven six three, four two seven, one two one two. That's our non-emergency dispatcher. Um, it rings to a real human being twenty four seven, um, and you're not waking us up. You already have people awake in the middle of the night. So if you ever have a non-emergency question, you have concerns, if you're talking to a real deputy, um, you can always call that number and they'll be able to verify who you're talking with. So in this case, um the victim was told that twenty thousand dollars in cash uh was required for a bond. And the victim did end up giving cash to a courier. Um, we don't know who that person is yet. Um, it is an active um investigation that we're working on. So again, if you're, uh, if you're feeling like something's not right, now give us a call. We'd rather have your call than it be nothing than for you to not call and have it uh end up being something you have to report to the police. So on the seventh at one fifty eight AM, uh countywide deputy responded to a business in the one nine seven, one nine seven hundred block of Aguana Street. We had a report of an intoxicated male up front on a nearby bench. Uh, deputy responded to check on him to make sure he was okay, found out that the male um had a warrant for his arrest out of uh Cass County, male was arrested, um booked at the Noka County Jail. Of course, the concern was, um, and the question some people asked, was he being over served in the city? He was not being over served in the city. It sounds like um he came into the city highly intoxicated and um credit to that business, they were concerned about him and called. So we do appreciate that business giving us a call. Um, he was warm and safe for the night in the care and custody of our friendly folks at the Noka County Jail. So um, but we're happy to report he's doing okay and hopefully got his warrant cleared up. And then on the thirteenth at one thirty eight PM, another deputy on patrol did a registration check, found the owner of the vehicle, had to revoke license and multiple arrest warrants. Um, expired registration on the vehicle. Um, this is pretty good proactive police work. The deputy stops the vehicle. And um, the owner was not driving, but the owner of the vehicle was in the passenger seat of the vehicle. Again, with those multiple outstanding warrants, she was arrested after providing a false name and a false date of birth, which is an additional charge. So um many times, by the way, if the police ask your name, they might already know, so don't lie about it. So um, in that case, she chose to lie. We already knew who she was. She was arrested. Her warrants were for a probation violation and a controlled substance crime. Again, she was uh brought over to the Anoka County Jail. And then on the fifteenth, seven twenty seven PM, we responded to a report of a bullet that had struck a home. Um, that is an active investigation. Crimes Unit came out. We had our Criminal Investigations Division, our uh major crime detective came out just in case. Um, no indications of injuries, um, no indications early that this was an intentional act, but certainly something we're, we're looking at just to be just to be make uh, to be extra cautious about why that happened. So and then a couple of year end trends, just to touch on traffic stops, they're up quite a bit. Um and traffic citations are down. Basically, what that means is you've got proactive cops uh in your community. They're stopping cars and they're, they're giving roadside lectures instead of tickets. Um, you know, sometimes we find that's more effective um than than writing a citation, but of course, every deputy, it's up to their discretion based on how serious the offense is, but a lot of good traffic enforcement uh within the city, a lot of warnings being issued and of course citations being issued when necessary. Um, vehicle crashes are up uh ten percent. Uh, most of the crashes here now then thankfully have no injuries. That's eighty for about eighty percent. And then burglaries are down and thefts have remained steady. And then if you look at the, in your package, you'll see sort of the five year trends, ordinance complaints, medicals and reported fires are up for the year. Um, you know, those are, though some can, some can ebb and flow, but of course, sometimes we do identify trends that we'll look at more closely as the year unfolds. So um, that is what I have for the December twenty twenty four report. With that being said, I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Any questions for Chief Deputy?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember.
You can take, Councilmember Rainville first.
Councilmember Rainville, go ahead, please.
Um, I don't have any questions, but I do want to thank Chief Deputy Jacobson for his service to Now Then. Um, it's been a pleasure working with you and uh as you say, you will still be around, so it'll be nice to see you. And I would like to welcome uh Lieutenant Bang, Bangager, Bangin'. Not sure how to pronounce it, but welcome to Now Then, and I look forward to getting to know you.
Oh, Cole.
Right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember uh Glazer.
Uh, Chief Jacobson, one of the things that's, that's been talked about because of all the uh um incidents and calls that you folks have to go on to bar none is that possibly the the need for a new conditional use permit. Um, due to the fact that the, the use at bar none has changed significantly multiple times over the years. Um, and while I'm not totally familiar with how to, you know, the the process for creating that CUP, um, I I assume that it'll probably involve the city attorney and and parts of the council. Is that something the sheriff's department also gets involved in, or is it something that they uh would review after, after the fact?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, um, I'm not super familiar with the process, although I do know some of the history which predates me about the concerns with the facility and um frankly, the the number of resources it's drawing from both the sheriff's office and the fire department are of note. Uh, we would probably follow legal direction from, from the city's attorney. But we'd be happy to provide input regarding call load, regarding what our deputies are actually seeing on campus, because it is my understanding that although their work out there is good intentioned, um, and they have good folks out there, their mission has changed significantly then um to uh since whatever initial permit was issued. So um we uh, we would be happy to be at the table to help in any way we can. So. You're welcome.
And I also just want to tell you, thank you, Chief Deputy, uh, number one, for keeping our city safe, our road safe. We appreciate everything you do and welcome. I'm just gonna call you Cole. It's just so much easier. Welcome, Lieutenant Cole.
Thank you very much and um, uh, we'll see you and see you next month. Appreciate you all.
And if you guys need to be excused and uh, Mr. Keith Miller, you guys can be excused, so you guys don't have to sit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, all.
Thank you. Alright, we're gonna move on to agenda item number nine, which is the administrator update. So turn it over to Natalie.
Well, first time doing this for you guys, so um, first item is that Frank will be back starting this up tomorrow. I will state that he has been kind of advising along the uh, along the way. Um, I forward you some of his emails, just so that uh you guys can have some of his input as far as this meeting was concerned. He was a little bit upset that he couldn't attend, but he had one more meeting that he had to attend with the city. He's helping out now, so. That he had to attend with the city, he's helping out now, so. Um, and he's happy to be coming back, so. Uh, Mackenzie Hills.
Can I add one, just one note, uh, um, so I was able to meet with Frank and get a little insight, and Frank's been doing this for a long time, he's got a ton of knowledge. And when we talk about, hey, maybe what's the best way to look at this item? Uh, he can not only rely on past experience, but he also has documentation that he can pull in, reference from other cities, so. It will be a great addition, um, I know it's an interim position, interim support for the next five months, but it's. Frank is, uh, Frank's gonna add a lot of value to the organization. So, welcome back Frank, even though you're not here tonight.
Yeah, he said he was gonna watch later. Um, Mackenzie Hills update, uh, uh, Attorney Ruby is still working on a developer's agreement with Mister Gustafson. Um, we're hoping to get some progress, but so far there hasn't been any. Um, the Jay's Service Updates on a hundred and ninetieth. Um, I did send you an email earlier today just to kind of update on you where it is. Uh, but Attorney Ru- Ruby is working with the attorney with the property owner, um, to come to an agreement. To bring that property into compliance. Um, the Ortel property, I have spoken with his son a couple of times, he has now finally. Been able to sign a contract with Perkins Contracting and they will be removing that foundation, uh, in April. Or before, you know, as soon as they can get in with the thawing, um, for the same price that they quoted the city to do. So he was pretty happy with that. Um. The SCORE Grant has been submitted. I would like to give a huge shout out to Shelley over here because she worked her butt off to get that done. Um, it's been a huge project that Mary undertook. So thank you very much, Councilmember Rainville, for the time you spent doing that one, um, and also going through it with her, um. Doing the grant for the recycling center is not an easy task, all the items that need to be kept track of. And the tonnage and the different suppliers and any income that's coming in, it's a, I believe she called it a puzzle. To be able to put it together, so that has been submitted. Um, I was able to take a Saturday and.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville, go ahead.
Uh, I would just like to address, um. The SCORE Grant also, thank you Shelley, you did an excellent job on this, it was your first time out the gate on it. And you didn't have a lot of time to work on it, um, because it was due so early in January. But thank you, Sue Dahl from the county has had, um, very positive, um. Uh, input about Shelley and what she has done and how quickly she grasped, so it was great. So the next one is the tonnage report, which I promised Shelley would be much easier. But thank you Shelley.
All right, so then the next item was the old escrows, either billed or refunded. This has been a long time coming project, um. I'm hoping that the old projects are gonna close out pretty soon, but hopefully within the next year. Um, all the new escrows are being done now currently through Banyan. Um, they're no longer counted as the revenue and no longer counted as an escrow. Or as a expense, so now, hopefully at some point here soon, um, when all of these old projects close. When the auditor asks me, how much money do you have an escrow? I will be actually be able to tell him how much we have holding there.
You got through a large portion, are, are we complete at this point with projects that are completed?
Uh, yes, the ones that are completed, they were refunded with the claims.
Excellent, thank you.
And then I did send out bills to those that still had a, an amount, um, due to the city. Um, as you guys all know, the keys have been an issue with the city. Starting from the very first day I started here with a bag of keys, not knowing where anything went. Um, it's literally a Ziploc bag and Frank will absolutely, um. Confirm all of that, as can I believe Dan and, or Councilmember Brian and Councilmember Rainville. Um, we've not been able to. Make account of all the keys that are in the city. Um, all the buildings have different keys, everybody's carrying around a huge rack. I mean, like, here's one right here, just for an example, so we're kind of working on, um. Getting the keys kind of rekeyed, my goal was to have a master key, but with the estimates coming in, I'm not sure that that's gonna work, it may just be. Uh, one or two buildings changed and just keeping everything else the same and maybe just doing the rental. Facilities and just changing these, so I know where the keys are for the historic town hall. For the two memorial, or you know, for the Memorial Park Pavilion for the Twin Lakes. Because we don't know and those keys do not have a, do not duplicate on them anywhere, and I just don't know where they all are. So we're working on that, um, I'll bring some estimates for the master, if that's something we choose to go through, otherwise it'll just be a maintenance issue.
So, Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville, go ahead.
So to Ms. Johnson, I'm wondering if, um, the mayor, previous mayor and Councilmember Flattable. Have returned their keys and fobs. Um, the mayor was requested twice to do it, and I believe Councilmember Flattable. Was also requested twice to do that, and I'm just wondering if they've returned their keys.
Um, as of today, they have not.
So I would. Would ask the councils, what, what, what would we like to do in regards to that, they, that is city property that needed to be returned to the city. Um, so what are council's thoughts on? Reaching out to them.
Open for discussion?
If, if we're in the, Mister Mayor.
Go ahead.
We're in the process of rekeying. Are there gonna be locks that we're not going to rekey at all?
Yes, if, if we don't go with the master, yes, there will be keys that we don't. Um, that we don't rekey, if we go with the master, I'm gonna try, I would like to do them all, so that the maintenance guys. Only have to carry, you know, one key to go into all the big buildings. But I'm not sure we can afford that this year, so.
So could you do this, could you bring an estimate to the next city council meeting, and we can talk about what that looks like? And make that decision, so I, I'm, I'm, I'm aligned with, uh, Councilmember, uh, Brian, um. Just if we're rekeying or in that process, I'm not gonna focus on the past, I'm looking forward. Any other thoughts?
I mean, we can request them again, I don't know who has what keys other than, you know, the, the, the keys that the mayor have, I know, I don't. I was never given any keys, so it's not really probab- though, different people have different keys for different things, so. I don't know how, what buildings they do or do not have access to.
So the overall goal is to get key control, once we have control, that, that's our goal, so we'll, we'll figure out the pathway to get there, but it's gonna take an estimate. Is there any other discussion on that?
Um. Is there any objection to do a review and file process? For the things like the compl- the collaborative planning rate increase or the mosquito notice or the mileage notice? Do you want to leave that kind of stuff in the consent, or is that just something that I can send to you for your knowledge? Uh, do you think that that is, um, relative information for the public to know, or is it? I'm just looking for your input to try to make a package.
State the topics again, please, what?
Um, in your packet, there was like the mosquito control sent out a memo saying that they could come out and give a presentation if a council member wanted them to. Um, the collaborative planning, um, hourly rate change. For two thousand and twenty five, I know we also got one for Attorney Ruby and also for, um, Engineer Nelson. That were also put in the packets previously, the, um, twenty twenty five mile, mileage notice. If I just email them to you and you guys can just file them away, or is that stuff that you want still in the packets?
So, Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Ryan. Let's let Mary go first, Councilmember Rainville, you go first.
So I, I agree with Ms. Johnson, a review, a receive and review, uh, file. Um, is appropriate, um, those are items that is just informational to council. And, um, it just lessens the putting of the packet together and the paper used to print the packet. If there's anything that comes out, um, that, um, would need to be addressed by council. Uh, a council member can then, um. Uh, let Natalie know that she would, we would want to have it, or that council member would want to have it. Like, in instance, the mosquito control. They, she could send that out and say, if you're interested in a session with them, let me know, I can schedule that. Until that, it's just receive it, read it, and, and file it, so I just, it'll be easier for Natalie. Um, less cumbersome for the packet. And, um, Natalie will use her professional, um, experience to determine what is a read and. A receive and review, um, versus having to go into the packet. I'm in favor of it.
I was gonna say the same thing, if, if, if there's nothing that needs council action, I would say email is totally adequate, I mean, if it's something that. You would determine that the public might have value in, we have a website. That we can easily put it on there, but other than that, I think, you know, if, if, we don't, if there's nothing approved. I would think email would be totally adequate.
Okay.
Great.
So the one thing I would bring up is that if there's increases in costs for our consultants, I think that's. If they could all be grouped in one email, we can review them, if there's opposition to that, we can say, hey, please include it in the packet, so I think the email is a great tool. And, and all of us are on that email, so we can see it, so if somebody objects, we can pull it right into the packet and have discussion.
Okay, and then to address that, for the newer council members, you cannot respond all. So if I, no, you may not. That violates open meeting law, so if you're going to respond to anything, please just respond only to me.
I'm wrong, I've been replying all.
You had, you, you had, it was okay up until that point that you, you took the oath, but, you know.
I did not know that, okay.
Don't worry about it, it happens, it's.
So reply just to you.
Reply just to me.
Okay.
So now that you both been sworn in, I guess I wasn't thinking it, I was, I know I wanted to bring it up tonight. I will also add that on the next few emails that I send out, just to help remind you not to reply, reply all.
It takes some getting to.
It does, okay, and thank you for that, because that will help with some of the resources of putting the packets together. Um, the last thing I'd kind of like to just let you guys know, um, I will be out of the office February sixth to the ninth, as I'm. Gonna go, um, out of state and spend some time with my parents, that, doing some medical testing, so. I'm, I believe the last council, we had to ask if that's okay through. The count, through the city council, I just wanna know what's the process here for.
Any objection for Natalie to take three days off?
No, and then part of it is, is Frank will be around too, so, yeah, I think that's. Gets into what we were talking about before, if. Um, but it, it'll be covered so that, yeah.
Right, okay. Thank you very much.
So just a quick question, so if you do take, you plan to take time off, is there a calendar that we could review that, so we know that?
Um, we do have one, since you all have Outlook, we could probably put the staff calendar as a shared calendar.
I think that.
I, we can, huh, our tech team can figure that out.
Would you like to know, because we have a shared calendar that includes all of our work hours, and we put. When we're out of the office on that as well, would you like just to look at that one? You want one, a brand new one with just our days off?
Just out of office.
Yep.
So if we've got a question, just like this, the sixth or ninth February, that I know that she will be out, and I can, yes, please don't give me all your work times, no, I don't.
There's lots of information on there, yeah, I can definitely make that.
So Administrator, do you have anything else?
I do not, and I will stand for questions if anybody has any.
Any questions to the Senator Administrator? Go ahead, Councilmember Brian.
And Johnson, I know we talked in the past about the SCORE Grant, and is that, are we still looking at? Um. That, that we, there was some, but I believe there's some paperwork that we needed to do, or, um, to get the, um, garbage holler companies. So that their numbers were included in that, is that something that we're still working with?
No, I would, I'm gonna refer over to Shelley, but I believe they got most of that.
Yeah, I reached out to them, uh, and sent an email and asked them to give me a timeline, you know, I was hoping. They could give me within, you know, like ten days, two weeks or whatever, and, um, so far it's all good.
Okay, so that's something we hadn't done, that theoretically can help us out with the numbers, so.
And that would be all I have.
All right, so that completes that, we'll go on to, uh, agenda item number ten, City Council. What was that?
Mary, did you say something?
I, okay. Hit, hit the wrong button.
The first, uh, agenda item up here is discuss the two thousand and twenty five City Council meeting dates. So let's open that up for discussion. And I think it's only has to do with the, um, the Veterans Day in November.
It is.
Um, it's currently scheduled for the eleventh and the proposal is to move it to the eighteenth. Was there, uh, an RCA for that, or am I missing that?
No, we can just take a motion.
Okay.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I'll make a motion to approve the City Council and Planning and Zoning Meeting, Count Meeting Calendar, the Road Route Two. The Spring and Fall Recycling Day, noting that our November meeting, you know, will be November eighteenth. And usually the December Planning and Zoning has been optional, so, if, if needed or not, so.
Okay, so we have a motion to move it from the eleventh to the eighteenth, and then you said something additional about recycling?
What was? I was just adding in that we have this, we have the Spring and Fall Recycling Dates listed on the bottom of like that calendar there.
Were you looking at the actual calendar?
Yeah.
Mister Mayor. Councilmember Brian, will you please put your microphone a little bit closer to you, they can't hear you out there.
Um, yeah.
Or lean in.
Lean in.
Or moving closer, thank you.
So one more time with your motion, Councilmember Brian.
To approve the scheduled two thousand and twenty five dates and, uh, moving the November meeting to the eighteenth. And just noting that usually the October or the December Planning and Zoning Meeting, um, has a tendency to get canceled due to lack of agenda items. So that may or may not happen.
Because it's on like the twenty sixth of December or something.
Twenty third, but yeah.
If you want to pass, okay, so anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second that.
Mister Glasser, or Councilmember Glasser has seconded the motion, uh, we will go, roll call. Councilmember Glasser.
Hi. Mayor Hybin.
I screwed up your name, didn't I? Councilmember Coles, Councilmember Brian.
Hi.
Councilmember Rainville.
Hi.
And I also concur, so motion carries. Moving on to the next one, appointments. Go ahead, Councilmember Rainville.
Sorry about that, um, I will have Shelley sends, I will ask Shelley to send something out. As we have got two new co- the new mayor and a new council member, as to what the spring and fall recycling days entail. And what it is that we typically have asked of our elected body to participate in that, but that'll come. You know, like in May for you, or, excuse me, in March.
Okay, prior to the April recycling date?
Yes.
Do you want to just speak on what, what is asked, so we, we say have some indication of what we're, what we're buying into?
Alright, so, so the ki- the city has had a longstanding, um. Recite two recycling days a year, and, um, one is in the spring, one is in the fall. And we typically have been offering a discount coupon to the residents. And also the ability to bring in free tires, because mosquito control comes in and takes those tires. Um, in the past, the elected officials have worked that day. Um, and volun- I should say, let me correct, correct that, we have volunteered our time on that day. And it's typically from eight to one, um, and it's just helping residents. Unload their recycling, bringing it into the recycling center. You know, just chatting with residents, things like that, but, and it's, if, if your schedule allows. Uh, we, um, would be more than happy to have you join us.
Thank you for sharing that, I think we can review our calendars and then, uh, get back to you on that. Okay, can we move on to annual appointments, which is, uh, number ten. A, number two, and we're gonna talk about appointments, do you want to take this, Natalie, or do you want me to cover this?
I, you can, because you guys get to decide who's gonna do what.
Okay, so first one up for appointment is Acting Mayor, we've got, uh, also Person Rainville on that. Um, you were the acting mayor previously, and is the recommendation to keep Mary as the acting mayor. And I don't, we don't have to do a motion on this, we're just asking.
So Mister Mayor, um, tip, in the past, what we have done is gone through them and then made one motion. Rather than doing, um, an individual motion on each lo- each item. But before we go too far. rather than doing, um, an individual motion on each lo, each item. But before we go too far on it, um, I would like to just note that, um, under the other agencies, so on the page number 64, we have an Anoka County Highway Department representative. And in all the years that I've been on the council, I've never had any conversation with Anoka County. They've always gone to the staff. And then if staff needs to, brings that to the council. So I think that's a position that we can eliminate. That it's not a statutory position requirement, anything like that. It was just, um, it's something that's been on there and, and I, I served in that capacity for many years. Linda Blake served in it, and so did, um, Shannon Flattable. And, um, to my knowledge, none of us have ever had any contact with Anoka County. So I would recommend that we take that off. And then.
Add that to the motion? Is it required?
And then on page.
You don't have to require it?
It is, it is not a statutory requirement.
Got it.
And then on page 65, number two, is, the wording is not correct, based on the changes we made in November of 24. We used to have the mayor make the decision as to whether the consultants come to the meetings. We changed that in November, that it's the city administrator, and if necessary, in consultation with the city, uh, with the mayor. If our attorney, our planner, our engineer need, need to be at the meeting. And I can provide the documentation or the, the, um, actual verbiage to Natalie on that. Um, the other item is number seven. That, um, should go underneath, where the planning commission is listed, because that sentence states, in your role as appointed above. And so that should be after the appointments. And then the sentence under planning commission should end with, um, December 31, 2025. For the two new positions that we're reappointing.
So multiple dates on that document?
Yep. But it's just some, and I hadn't, I hadn't had a chance to print it out until today, so.
Okay, so acting mayor, uh, councilmember Rainville, are you good with staying the acting mayor? Do we need any discussion on that?
I am fine with that, if that's what council approves.
We'll do a motion at the end. Any other discussion on that one? Okay, moving to the next one. Additional check signers. Looks like it'll be myself and city administrator Natalie Johnson. Any discussion on that one?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
So just to clarify that we have the checks originally would be, the checks would be signed by staff as, as in, in our, as our clerk capacity, to say that the, the checks, as I understand it, so that the checks are accurate. And then the checks would also be signed by, um, the, the mayor to approve payment. So I'm just trying to clarify what, um, how is that different from, the, the, how is this, um, as presented for the additional signers, different than what we've, how we've, how checks should be signed, and how we've done it in the past?
I don't think it's any different. Um, I think it's just got updated names on it. That's the only thing.
Just wanted to.
Because there's two people, two people that have signed every check.
Yeah.
Okay, um, let me just explain to you. Is the bank needs to remove Mr. Lainer and, uh, Mayor Pelon from it? And then they're just gonna add Mayor Hibbin, Hybin. You guys are so cute. And so that's pretty much all we're doing. And, uh, councilmember Rainville is gonna remain on there as a secondary, so it would be, either the mayor or, uh, councilmember Rainville signing as a council member approving the payment, and myself, or whoever becomes the next city administrator, would be the main person for the city, and then, uh, I would as a, if I needed to.
Okay, just wanted to.
Yep, so it's exactly the same.
So no change on the process, just change on the names? Okay, moving to the next one, architectural review committee. I, I don't even know what this is.
Uh, they would review plans on, in different developments, make sure it's something that we want. Um, as far as I, since I've been here, nobody's done anything with that.
Not really. Jews have been taken care of by the, our planner and planning zone.
Through the planning and zoning, yeah.
So can we update this to put, to reflect our planner?
I don't know the legality of it, but I think it's basically works, work, the council is the final approval, so that's probably why it's written the way it's written.
Okay, so recommendations leave as is?
I, I think we're, we're good just leaving it the way it's at.
Any, uh, any discussion on that one? Hearing none, moving on. City administrator interim, um, city administrator Natalie Johnson. Next one, capital, so stop me if, uh, we need to fix anything. Capital improvement committee. They have the mayor. What is the capital improvement committee?
So basically, that's when we're kind of doing some of the planning, and we're gonna bring it together for budget, so.
Buying in the CIP plan?
Yes, yes.
So it's all approved by the city council anyway?
Correct.
So the committee is just proposing it, is what my understanding of it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Glazer.
Uh, councilmember Rainville and, or, and Brian, maybe they can confirm this, but it, am I correct that historically, this has been, two people from the council, the mayor and a council member?
That is correct.
So we need two people?
I would be willing to, um, put my name in for that.
Councilmember Glazer is willing to put his name in. Any discussion on that? Sounds like you just added your name to that, sir. Thank you. Economic Development Authority Commissions, Commissioners, Mayor and City Council Members. How many people do we need for that?
We just, it only had to be a couple, it's just another statutory thing that we've had to have, so we just made it the council.
Same concept as what we just did above.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville, did you have a question?
No, I do not.
Nope.
Okay. Dan, please move your microphone closer. You just moved the microphone closer to you.
Use your windy outside voice.
Outside voice. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the, I got nothing. Um, emergency contacts. Uh, we have city administrator, maintenance supervisor Joe. Looks like his name got cut off. Is it Glaze?
It is Glaze.
There's no R on the end of it? Okay, and Joe Glaze. And third person would be maintenance worker Eric Madsen. Any discussion on that one? Sounds like we're good. Moving on to the next one, farmer market liaison, councilmember Rainville. Moving on to the next one, planning commission liaison. So this is the planning and zoning committee, coming to the meetings. Um, I know that, uh, myself and councilmember, uh, Glazer had a discussion on this. Um, I put my name down here. Are you guys good with that, me attending that meeting? Or if you guys are super excited, you could do it?
I'm good with that for now. Yeah, I have. That's, I'm kind of that.
Okay. Um, next one, weed inspector.
That's a mayor's job.
So, do we need to clarify the type of weed, Mr. Mayor, with our new cannabis policy?
So I think there are two separate issues. Um, this is 10 invasive, uh, weeds that come into, that are in our county or in our city, that we need to be on the lookout for. So I think we need probably an educational class on what those can are. I don't believe cannabis is one of them. It's the best answer I got at this point. Okay, city consultants, um, it looks like they're all filled in. Do we need any discussion on city consultants? Hearing none, moving to the next one, official designations. They're already filled out, and it looks like they are complete. So the official newspaper is the Anoka Union Herald. Does anybody get that? Anybody? No. Moving on, other agencies, um, acting emergency manager, management director, which is interim chief, Rob Miller. Then we also put, uh, the interim chief Miller on the Anoka County Fire Protection Council.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Ron.
For the, um, just for clarification, usually if, if we publish, uh, our notices in the Anoka Union Herald, it's the same publisher that usually takes care of the Elkhiver paper, so usually they do put it in the Elkhiver paper as a courtesy for us, so. But that's okay, we got it. I mean, there's nothing we need to change. That's just, yeah.
Got it. I just haven't seen a, an Anoka Union Herald.
It's a subscription, so you have to pay for it to get it, but we have to do it because that's statute, so.
All right, so I'm mov, moving down, we skip the, uh, or we are taking off Anoka County Highway Department, moving on to the Anoka County.
Mr. Mayor, I wanted to go back up to the fire protection.
Councilmember Brian.
Um, the fire protection council has your emergency manager, and in this case, chief Miller, but there's also an elected official that attends those meetings, because we are talking about budget things. Um, I would like to, uh, be our representative on the Anoka County Fire Protection Council.
So councilmember Brian is volunteering for the Anoka County Protection Council. Any discussion? Mary just smiled. It sounds like, um, we'll vote on that. Yes, please. All right, the recycling, we have councilmember Mary Rainville.
Yay.
Thank you, Mary. Public safety liaison. What, what does that person do?
I, isn't that, wouldn't be, that be cool, then coming to us then, or?
No, I, Mr. Mayor, the public safety liaison, as I understand, is very similar to the fire protection council, but it has to do with, the, the focus is, is being on the, the police departments and the sheriff departments, but I also understand that those meetings are, um, usually more during the day. I could be wrong. Um, if, if, if to have someone on there, I, I can put my name on there too, but there just might be meetings where, um, if they're during the day, I might not be able to make, and so maybe if, and, and I can let, um, let you know if that's the case, and maybe someone else.
And if not, maybe the city administrator could cover down on that?
Yeah.
So you'd like to put your name on that one?
Yep.
Okay, and then Mr. Mayor.
Also, administrator Johnson.
Councilmember Brian, um, I don't recall seeing any of these. It might have been something that the previous administrator would have been getting. Do you know where it comes from?
I believe it comes from the sheriff department.
Comes from the sheriff department. Okay, so I'll just make a contact to them and see what that is, then. I wasn't aware of that.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the Upper Rum River watershed, and this is two council members for this one?
Does not have to be two council.
Okay, we had two, but the requirement is only to have one.
We've had, we've had, um, residents of Now Then fill that position. Maybe myself have done that when I was not on council.
So it could be a resident also.
By our new JPA, we need at least one council member attending. Um, so, and I was planning on staying on that, so if we don't have, um, anyone else from council filling that spot, then I would suggest that we treat it similar to the planning and zoning and put out, for applications for anyone who might be interested in serving on that. And, and now it is a paid, because it is paid, just like the planning and zoning is for residents, so.
Okay, so open it up to the council. Does anybody else want to be on the Upper Rum River Watershed Council?
I would put my name in for that if there aren't any residents that are.
Would you like a resident to go first?
If, if there's residents in our, in our state, um, great. If not, I would be happy to.
Councilmember Glazer, I think it's a very respectful thing. So is that something we can publish, that we have an open position for that council? And if it's not filled, then councilmember Glazer said he would fill.
Do we want to put a timeframe on interest coming in?
The next meeting's not till March, so there's time.
Okay.
We wanted to open it up, and if there's anybody, we could appoint them in at the next meeting.
At the next meeting? Okay.
I think that'd be great. Um, and there is many residents that are asking to be part of it, and I think that's a great, great opportunity. Okay, did that cover everything that you were tracking, city administrator Johnson?
Yes.
Okay, so we can do this in one motion. Thank you for bringing that up, councilmember Rainville. Um, so I need a motion first.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual appointments as discussed, as well as to direct staff to post for the, um, uh, the Upper Rum River Watershed Management, role, and also we can have, we can, each city is now allowed to have an alternate, is how that works out too, so. Worst case, yeah, you can, can be the alternate, just to make sure we have people there, so.
Okay.
That would be my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, councilmember Glazer has seconded. All right, we will do roll call. I'm gonna do reverse order this time. Did you have something, councilor Rainville?
Yes, I, my question is, on the agenda, it's got the annual appointments and review of the P and Z applications. Are we going to, review the two applications we have from the people that are already there, just looking to be reappointed, or do we want to do that separately?
I was thinking we were gonna do it separately.
Then, Mr. Mayor. I would recommend.
We already have a motion, uh, council.
But, well, what I, if we're gonna do them separately, the applica, the P and Z appointments are part of this annual appointment. So it would be my recommendation is that we review the applications. If we agree on that, then those two members would be reappointed as part of our, our, um, appointment process. In other words, we're gonna have to do a second appointment process.
Withdraw my motion.
Thank you. So the motion from councilmember, um, Brian has been, uh, withdrawn. Thank you. All right, so we will have to review the two packets. Uh, the first packet is from Jamie Lewis, uh, for the planning and zoning. Um, you guys have read through the education and experience, and then the second one, and it's signed, I do have some concerns on page three of this, where it says there is, uh, um, what do we call it? Conflicts? That they're all checked, yes. I don't quite understand that. Oh, never mind, I read that incorrectly. They're, they're supposed to be all checked, yes. And then the second one is from Dan Happola.
Happola. Yeah.
Happola, I work with him, it's Happola. Okay, any further discussion on these two? So in this case, the motion would be that they would both be voted in as part of, one is new and one is,
They're both, they're both.
They're both already on? Okay, he doesn't know what he's talking about. They're both already on, so this would be to renew, um, what do you call it?
Planning.
Reap.
Reap. Planning their appointment. Thank you, that's the word I was looking for. Renewing their appointment for the next two years. Is that correct?
Three years.
Is it a two years?
Three.
Three.
Three years. Thank you, councilmember Rainville, for the next three years. Any open discussion on the two appointments?
No.
Hearing none. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville, uh, Brian. Going that way, but going this way. Councilmember Brian.
I will make a motion to approve the, um, annual appointments as discussed, including, um, the two, uh, reappointments for the planning and zoning, as well as authority, I have requesting that staff would post for the, uh, second and alternate Upper Rum River watershed, positions.
It's a very clear motion, thank you. Does anybody want to second that motion?
I'll second.
Second, uh, from councilmember, uh, Glazer. I would like to start with roll call, starting with, uh, councilmember Rainville first.
Yes. I.
I.
Councilmember Brian.
Hi.
Councilmember Glazer.
Hi.
And I'm also an I. So motion has passed, motion carries. Okay, moving on to number four. Number four, so attend number four, which is the, uh, resolution for the social media policy.
Would, number three is the presentation first?
Yes, number three, presentation. I skipped over number three. I don't know why I put a slash through that.
All right, I'm just gonna share this with some. So I can show you guys everything. Okay.
All right, perfect. So, um, I know you guys all know me, for you in the audience, I'm Lexi Johnson. Um, I'm a financial assistant, um, here at the city of Now Then. Um, I'm super excited to talk about social. Um, here at the city of Now Then, um, I'm super excited to talk about social media. I know. It has been, um, kind of an ongoing conversation in Now Then for years. Um. So according to recent data from Pew Research Center, around sixty-eight percent of US adults use social media. That indicates a significant portion of our day-to-day communication is happening on these platforms. Um, and so if we want to reach the residents, we have to meet them where they are, which is online. Um, and with the complications of our website, which I'm super excited to give you an update on that, um. Uh, we approved a new website. That's gonna be, that's in the works right now through Civic Plus. Um, we got the design all finalized. We have, um, a lot of that. Most of the design is completed. Now, what our project manager has said is that we're just in line for the web development side. Um, it'll be another about eight to twelve weeks, depending on when the web developers get to us. Um, then they'll pull all of the information from our current website. It will be mobile friendly, um, and it will. Be linked on our hopeful Facebook page as well. That will be the main source of our, all of the information for Now Then. So I'm super excited about that. Um, again, that will be coming within the next eight to twelve weeks, and I will give you updates on that as I get it. Um, but I just kinda wanted to talk about specifically a Facebook page for us. Um, I'm gonna try and make this go away. Hmm, no, that's not it. Alright, well, um, that says why social media is a useful tool for cities. Um, so this. Social media can be used for real-time updates and emergency communication in times of crisis, like natural disasters, like road closures, such like that. That can be an instant way to get that news out to our residents. Um, and it's a two-way communication. So, social media facilitates dialogue between the city and its residents. Citizens can ask questions, provide feed, feedback, participate in discussions. Um, it fosters a sense of community and transparency as well. In terms of cost effectiveness compared to the traditional methods like, um, print advertising and mailers, social media communication is relatively inexpensive. Um, it includes targeted messaging, and so we can tailor messages to specific demographics or interest groups. Um, and it will promote local events and initiatives. Social media is a great platform for publicizing community events. Um, highlighting local businesses and city initiatives, and it can also gather feedback and public opinion. Uh, we can do polls and surveys and comment sections are great to be used to gauge public opinion on various issues and inform on policy decisions. Um, so I have a couple examples of how other cities use Facebook. Um. Istante specifically posts a lot of their agendas, their packets and such on a quick, easy link. So they would see the post, they can click on it, and they will bring up the packet automatically versus. Right now, um, we have a system on our website, and then you click a button there and it will take you to another link to a Google Drive. Um, so it's not, it's not hard by any means, but it, it's just gonna be easier and get that information out there faster. Um, Saint Francis, they do a lot of public events, and this is just an example here. They had a puzzle exchange. Um, that they were just kinda saying the date, the time, just the little bits of information, and then with more questions, it will refer to the website. Um, I thought this was a great example too of how we can use those comments where someone else said, we're residents of Oak Grove, but we just live a couple miles. Can we come? And it's like, absolutely, you may come. That's a great reference of how we can use those comments and replies to easily share that information that everyone can see. Um, City of Ramsey, they do a weekly FAQ. Um, I thought that was a great way to get particular questions that the office might have people calling in on. Um, this one specifically is like, should I clean the chimney in my wood burning fireplace? It's a very specific question, but it's great information to have. Um, so staff can take that, those frequently asked questions and kind of put that on there, just to help educate the residents about. Uh, maybe ordinances, policies, we can communicate with the fire and the, um, police as well to do some public safety things, um, et cetera. So, surrounding cities, social media presidents, uh, presence, excuse me, pretty much everybody in our surrounding communities at least use Facebook. Um, like I said, we are kind of behind the gun on this. Um, we definitely. Should be on social media, and that is an absolute personal opinion, but, um, everybody else is on, is on social media. I have recently become a part of a communications group with twelve other surrounding cities near us. Um, and I've been going to that group monthly and have gotten a lot of insight just about social media and how it can be used. And all of which recommend having a Facebook page at least at minimum, um, and how, how much of a useful tool that can be. Um, notice all of them do allow comments, and that's kind of what I'll get into next. I know that there was, um, a little bit of hesitancy. To allow comments on a public Facebook page. Um, so after talking with the communications group and doing my own research, there are a couple things to understand before. Deciding on those comments positions. Um, one is the algorithms, and then two is the importance and interaction of two-way communication. So I kinda wanted to break down for anyone who doesn't know how algorithms on social media work. So I kind of have a little metaphor here. So you can kind of imagine social media is like a giant library essentially, and you can't. You can't possibly read billions and billions of books. So the algorithm is essentially a librarian, and it will learn what you've liked and what you've shared. What you've commented on, how long you've spent looking at posts and such, and it will pull those posts. Um, it will scan for keywords, who posted them, um, if your friends have liked them and such, and that's what your feed on social media will be. So that's kind of how the algorithm works. The more likely. It thinks that you're gonna see some, that you're gonna like something and interact with it, the more likely it's gonna show up on your page. Um, and that's specifically important when starting a Facebook page, because if there's no interaction. Or anything, odds are it's gonna take a long time to get that Facebook page up and running, because it's not gonna be seen by anybody. Since there won't be interaction, interactions or comments. I'm not saying it's impossible, but it will make getting that following a little bit more difficult for sure. Um, and then the importance and interaction of two-way communication. So from a marketing perspective. It's super important for users to get their peers, customers and residents interacting with their posts, um, for a couple of reasons. Um, it will boost visibility. So like I said with the algorithm, when people like comment and share a post, it signals to the algorithm that the content is interesting. This makes the post more likely to be shown to other people and expanding its reach. Um, it's like word-of-mouth marketing, but online. So if your post receives a lot of engagement, especially in the form of comments. It is more likely to show up in the user's feed. So this increases awareness and the potential for a larger online following, which in those cases of a. Um, emergency or something like that will get that information out faster versus, let's say there's a road closed, there's a tree down or something, I, we would post that. If we don't have any following and the odds of that post being seen in a timely manner would be much less. Um, second, it creates a sense of community when people interact with businesses, um, groups, cities, and each other on social media will create a sense of belonging and shared interest. Um, a study done at University of Alabama concludes that businesses and groups that disable comments were perceived as less receptive to consumer feedback, or what we can term a consumer voice. Um, and consequently, their judge is less sincere and ultimately incur both interpersonal and professional consequences. Again, that was with businesses, um, and big groups, so not to say that that would be a city, but I can definitely see where that might come into play as well. Um, and then in short, interaction turns social media from a one-way broadcast into a two-way conversation, which is essential to building relationships, gaining insights. And ultimately succeeding. Um, statistically, people want their voices to be heard, so taking away the option to voice them, especially on a public communication platform. Can come off as a little. Big brother-ish, a little, that kind of thing. You can see where there might be some issues with that. So the goal is to encourage questions and open communications and not silence them. Um, and then we can get into some logistics. So who will be maintaining this account? Um, I will be the primary moderator of the account. I currently manage the website and all of the graphics for events, posts, um, questions, that kind of thing. So it makes the most sense for me to continue doing so. Um, excuse me, however, the administrative assistants will also have access to the account. Um, and have the training necessary to moderate it in case I'm gone or too busy with another project. Um, they will be able to do the same thing as well. Um, how much time will be spent moderating and answering questions? Um, so I don't anticipate a huge sum of time to be added to what I'm already doing. Like I said, I'm already creating the gra, graphics. I'm already posting them to the website. Um, I currently post with my personal account, so does Councilmember Rainville and Deputy Clerk Johnson have both been posting with, um, our. Personal accounts into the Now Then Bulletin Boards. Those have been great at getting, uh, personal information out. Um, however, it would be great to not have to use our personal accounts for city business. So that would be something we wouldn't be posting in the bulletin's board. It would be our own page where we can get those posting without having to use city staffs, um, and council members' personal accounts for that. Um, I asked the current communication professionals within the surrounding cities at that communication group, how much time they spend moderating comments. And given a lot of the surrounding cities that are in that group are much bigger, um, Elk River, uh, Seago, Albertville, a lot of those kind of areas. Um, and they said that they spend about around five to ten minutes a day moderating the comments, which would mostly be what would be added on to what I'm already doing. Um, and they usually say they kinda check in the morning, couple minutes here and a couple minutes before they leave for work, so. Um, additionally, I would anticipate that would be an extra hour of work per week. Again, I'm not really gonna know until we have it up and running, and as soon as we have that going for a couple weeks, I would happily give you an, an accurate number about what that timing is gonna look like. Um, and then there will be times when I might have to post on a non-workday. Again, that would be in the consideration of an emergency and such. Um, I did ask the communication professionals, and they had said that those hours that they do on weekends and non-workdays would just be tracked. And they do get a stipend for using their personal devices. Um, that's something I don't, I don't think will be necessary. I don't think we'll be posting on weekends very often, but that's something that. Can be up for discussion if you do choose to do so. Um, and then next would be the policies. So I did attach the, um, League of Minnesota Cities. Comprehensive social media policy model, which is what I had updated. Um, we did discover when doing research that there was a resolution and a social media policy adopted by the city council in twenty nineteen. And with that approval to make a Facebook page, yet nothing ever came of it. Um, so I'm not sure in terms of these new resolutions and these new policies, if that would technically be an adaptation or, um, an update, or how you guys kind of wanna go about that, but. I just wanted to mention that that was there. It was previously approved, um, and nothing ever really came of it. So. Um, with that, I know that's a lot of information, so I will open it up to any questions you may have. Um, yeah.
Would, uh, Mister Mayor?
Councilmember Glazer.
Would, uh. Folks, residents that have, um, subscribed to our Facebook page, would they be able to, um, post things themselves as well to, to that?
No, it would just be us, us that would posting on the page. They wouldn't, there wouldn't be residents that can post to a page. If, if they have questions and such, they would be in the form of a comment on a post.
So, and, and, you know, we can, I'll probably, we'll probably bring this up again when we, um, talk about, um, approving a social media policy. Um, but i, in my experience, um. In mo, monitoring, I don't typically participate in the Real Now Then Bulletin Board, but I do. Monitor it, because sometimes there's some thing, helpful things that are posted on people's concerns. My concern about comments is sometimes people go way off into the weeds, and there are times when some of the things that are posted may be considered. Uh, disrespectful and demeaning to other people within the community.
Mm-hmm.
And I just wanna state that, that, that would be a concern. So.
Yeah, and there, it does say in that policy, so if something, um, is considered an obscene comment, so obviously we can't take down personal opinions. Um, and I did talk with Lisa at the Mi, League of Minnesota City. She is gonna be sending me a couple of more, um, documentation and research about that. Um, but pretty much, they had said, obviously, if something is just a personal opinion, we cannot take it down. Because that is a violation of free speech. However, if someone is, um, writing obscene things, if they are leaking personal information. That kind of thing. You can see in the policy what is in there. We are allowed to delete those comments, um, and we would just send them if they have any sort of. Um, pushback about like, hey, why'd you delete my comment? That kind of thing. There is a policy in there for them to, um, talk with the city administrator and. Seek legal advice to see, you know, if, why that comment was deleted. Um. I did talk with specifically the, um. Um, the senior communications coordinator in Elk River. Um, she has a degree in communication and lots of experience within that. She runs, I think, five or six at least Facebook pages. For Elk River specifically, um, and I kind of asked her about the same thing, and she had said that, um, this is a quote from her. And she said that having an open channel of communication with your resident is incredibly vital for strong communication. It builds trust, reliance and positive engagement. It can also help mitigate any rumors. For example, our posts and comments are often screenshotted and placed in the comments of trending bulletin board posts. Um, and squash any rumors or wrong information. We do have repeat spammers and offenders, but usually we ignore them. We strive to comment back gratitude, answer questions and correct misinformation. I think it looks very negative to shut comments off, AKA here isn't the information, now don't ask questions. We like to be the ones to post the controversial topics so that the comments are in our space where we can monitor and respond if needed. Um, so that was kind of what I got from everyone there, was that, um, of course, there will be comments that everyone would like to delete, and that happens to everyone. Everywhere on social media, um, but you do have to remember that the people posting these things are gonna be posting them whether they're on our page or not. Um, I mean, if, if someone has something to say like that, it's, yeah.
I, I rec, I recognize that people are gonna post things, whether we have comments enabled on our Facebook page or not. Um, I do wanna recognize that a constituent sent me an email last night, um, about a couple of topics pertaining to tonight, tonight's meeting, one of them being. Uh, a, a city-owned Facebook page, and they are of the opinion they would not want their tax dollars to be spent on city staff monitoring comments. On a Facebook page. So, yes, people are gonna, people are gonna post those things. They might post them elsewhere, um, but that is not at the expense of the city.
Sure, and like I said, I can give you an accurate number. I don't anticipate any more than an hour a week doing that. Um, so like I said, my, my opinion and my recommendation would be to start with comments on, let's say ninety days or. Just until we can get that following to use that for the algorithm to hopefully get a following. Um, and if we're seeing a lot of those, if I'm, if I'm spending a lot of time having to monitor those comments, then we can revisit it and definitely shut them off afterward. That would be my recommendation going forward. Obviously, you guys can do what you wish with that, but I, um, I do have a lot of resources, and I do have a lot of professionals that are willing to speak to you guys about that topic as well. If you want more information.
Mister Mayor.
City Administrator Johnson.
Can you go on to the live stream right now and tell me how many people are watching?
Um, yeah.
Absolutely.
And the only reason I'm asking this is because the only way people know that this was live tonight is because we put it up, or actually. It out on Facebook. So we have twelve people watching right now. She posted it onto both of the Now Then websites. That shows, or I'm sorry, Facebook pages. That kind of shows you that the people are watching it. We have a hundred and fifty subscribers to the YouTube. Um, and I believe it was also mostly gonna be like, we're closed on Monday. If there's a tree down, um. Then something like this, we're, hey, we're going live in fifteen minutes. Jump on or that kind of stuff. Um.
But, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember.
Um, I, I appreciate that, and our YouTube channel is something that I've, I've monitored is, uh, especially as I took an interest in considering running for, for office here in the city of Now Then. Um, are, the number of subscribers I don't think have really changed much at all. Um, maybe, maybe they've gone up a little bit, but, um, not even ten percent since I started monitoring that. And the number of people, um, participating and, and tuned in tonight, uh, is not, um, uh, much different, if any different. From prior to these things being posted on the Real Now Then Bulletin Board. So I would, I would, um, contest that. And, and we really need to take a look at statistics if, uh, if we're gonna take that into consideration as to, uh. Historically, are we able to monitor how many people were tuned in, um, to pass monthly meetings? I don't think it's significant, tonight is significantly different. Um, than, than what we've seen in the past. So not that somebody didn't become aware of tonight's meeting because of the, the posting on Facebook. Um, but, um, that's, the amount of participation tonight online is not much different from, from past participation.
Well, in the past, we haven't, the last, what, six meetings, I don't think I've been able to livestream at all, so.
That's.
Can see is that they mute it afterwards, and I can tell you those numbers.
I, I have watched, I have watched live stream meetings within the last six months, so that, and, and I, one of the things that I keep an eye on, be, uh, one time I was sick and I wasn't able to be here. So I watched from home, and I was, I was, you know, my hope, and I know, um, Mayor Hibbin, one of the things that he ran on is, is, is. Getting more community participation and more people attending meetings. Um, so it's, it's not significantly different from when I watched, I think it was maybe back in October.
Okay.
So, I just wanna bring those. I just want to bring those things up.
Yeah, and uh, to to use your argument as well, for for the comments thing, I mean, there's no way to know. How much of those dollars being spent, paying me moderating those until we do it. Um, and I mean, uh, looking back at the, since the beginning of October. There've been about nine posts made regarding announcements and city events. Um, that we've made on each of those two bulletin boards. So let's just say eighteen posts total. Um, there's only been three comments that we needed to respond to. Um, within those, and again, that's since October. So I don't anticipate there being a lot. Of comments and I don't anticipate there being a lot of. Need to watch over those, because again, we're just using this to spread public information. We're not going to be doing this to say, ask a question below. And I'm going to spend half of a day answering them. Like, that's not what it's going to be used for. So I mean, if we want to go to statistics and look at it, I would much rather. Try it with the comments, see how it goes, and then look at those numbers. And if it's too much, then absolutely, let's turn them off. But why would I, why do we start with not having them at all without? I mean, there's so much more that we can use to to answer small questions like, for example, like that Saint Francis one. Of, hey, I live in Oak Grove, but can I come? Absolutely. Well, it doesn't make sense to make an entire separate post saying. Hey, by the way, even if you don't live in Now Then, you can come to this event. Like, that would be more work than just responding to a comment saying. Hey, yes, you can come see you there, if that makes sense.
It makes sense. Let's uh, let's go for additional discussion, Councilmember Brian.
I think Mary has her hand raised.
Mary, Mary, uh, Councilmember Rainville.
So, um, I I will say that I don't remember approving this in twenty nineteen. I remember having conversations on it, but there were questions about policies. So. I apologize as a council member, if we truly approved it and we didn't do anything on it. And I don't remember doing that. I remember conversations. And since the beginning of the conversations of Facebook, I've always been against allowing comments. As I worried about the data practice and the rules surrounding that. But staff has done a good job of researching the topic and and now has assured me. And allowing comments is the correct thing to do. And until this afternoon, I didn't feel that way. And I responded to a plot, uh, resident last night or the night before saying. Yeah, I don't want comments, but the more I've talked to people and listened to Lexi's um, presentation. I I think it's the right way to go. Uh, again, as Lexi said, is we won't know until we try it. And um, as far as the YouTube subscribers versus watchers. That's two different things. I'm not a subscriber to YouTube, but I watch the meetings after the meeting. Some people think that's kind of sad, but I do that. Um, so, but I'm not a subscriber and I'm not watching it live because I'm at the meeting. And um. One of the things with. Our employees posting on this other webs, the other Facebook pages. That opens them up to liability of having their personal Facebook connection. Being um, able to be subpoenaed in court or whatever um, via data practices. So it's better that it's just on the city website or city Facebook. And um, I I say we go for it, we we go for comments, which is again, I guess, that's what I've always thought. And let's see how it goes. Lexi proposed like a ninety day um, trial period. Let's see how it goes. Um, I think what we need to do then also is we need to post on the other two Facebook pages and now then. That we will no longer be posting. City functions on those Facebook pages and ask people to join the city of Now Then Facebook page. And then get the information from there.
Thank you, Councilmember Ryan.
Well, are we, I'm just, I just want to clarify, are we talking about the social media policy first or the Facebook page? Or are we going to do both together?
I think there were two separate ones.
Right.
In. The first one is the policy and then the second one would be creating Facebook. So just open discussion right now as both of them have been grouped up in the presentation.
Yeah, and I just wanted to mention as well, the twenty nineteen one, it was together. I had made both of the resolutions before we had found the other one. Um, so if you want us to rewrite them and put them into one, that's totally fine as well. Um, one thing I did forget to mention as well though, too, is that the website will be the primary source of information, not the Facebook page. So. Yes, yeah, okay, perfect.
And if I recall, the website will be, will also be, you pu- put it on the website, they'll be putting it on the Facebook page. Is that still correct?
Hmm, no. So you would, you would be posting, everything that I post on the Facebook page, I will also post the website, but it's two different things.
There was a way to do it from the website.
There could be. I I will look into that.
Isn't that saves time and just.
Yeah, yeah.
Put on the website, dumps it on the Facebook.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure there's a possibility of that.
So. I was going through the two and maybe I'm missing it, but what's different between the updated social media policy versus the one that was passed before?
There's really not a whole lot. Um, I think the only no- difference is that I noted was in the. Um, in the comment area of what is allowed to be deleted. Um, I believe was the only change. I think there was more that was in the twenty nineteen version. Um, looking at it though, I'm not, I think we would have to get that reviewed if we wanted to put the things that were removed back in. Because I think some of them were lightly worded. I would, I would ask for Attorney Rupi's uh, uh, opinion on those before. I don't know if that was the conversation that Mary was talking about. Um, in twenty nineteen about those. There was just some lightly worded things in there that could be taken. I don't know. It just wasn't very specific.
It wasn't very specific because it was still relatively new at the time and we, that's when we said, well, let's have a. Policies and we put one together, passed it, and then went, let's give it a whirl and see what happens with Facebook, so.
Yeah, that's really the only difference that I've seen. Um, is they've just expanded their definition of social media because there's been so much more since then. And then they just kind of got more specific with um, the comments that are allowed to be deleted.
Any additional questions, Councilmember Ryan?
Um, no, I guess I would rather. I would rather try it out, like we were saying back in, back a few years ago, to actually have a Facebook page that we can have there with with um. Not allowing comments, see how it goes. I mean, we're, uh, in my opinion, we're not out to become Mr. Beast and and. Have millions of followers. If anybody wants to. Subscribe to, to, to subscribe to the, to the Now Then page, they can certainly do that and they'll get the the updates for, from that as it goes and um. That we can at least give it a whirl and and see if there is any. Just, just to have our own way to post up on Facebook and then and um, give that a try before turning on comments.
Okay, I'd like to add a couple of comments. So one, uh, Lexi had brought up about weekends. Um, I I definitely wouldn't be interested in doing additional posts in the weekend. So it would be while you're at work if we were going to do that or your.
Yes, that, that was just in the, in the act of a dire emergency where public information needed to be released. I would not be regularly. And I would be avoiding posting on Fridays as well, just so we could monitor. If I, if monitoring is needed over the weekends, um, the main post would be Monday through Wednesday.
So the big concern that's come up is the comments and um, I'll call it the time per day that would be required to review the comments. I think that's the same concern. Uh, I've talked to you, I've talked to both Natalie. Um, the other one that came up about comments is, somebody said, well, it's illegal to do it without doing comments. I don't know that that's true or not true. Somebody brought that up to me.
It, it's definitely legal to take, to disable them. I know.
It is legal?
It is legal. Yep, you.
So it can be done with or without comments.
Yes, correct. It's just common practice and suggestion to leave them on.
And as, as you, as you showed, all the other cities are doing it. Um, I I would be. Um, in favor to monitor it and and do it kind of like Mary suggested. Like at the ninety day mark, we'd come back and say, hey, this, you would have to track your time and how long it would be. And then at the one eighty mark, I'd like to bring it back up and say, all right, how do we feel about this as a council? At least we would have some data to back it up at that point. My, my concern is that, you know, we say it'd be a few minutes in the morning. Um, I have people at work telling me it's only a few minutes and sometimes it's a lot more than a few minutes, and that's my concern. So at the ninety day mark, if you brought it up and said, all right, here's my average time per, per week I'm spending on this. That's the piece of data that I would really like to make the decision. Um. And if we're concerned at ninety, we could make a resolution to change it. Uh, but at one eighty, that's, we'd have enough data by then to say, hey, do we want to continue on or do we stop? So, looking back, I'm, this is, I'll, I'll call it a great thing they did back in two thousand nineteen. They re, you know, they passed a. Resolution to be able to have it. It just was never in place, so. Um, for myself, I would be in favor of the comments, but with key benchmarks at ninety and one eighty, we'd report back to give it a try. Uh, we're not going to know until we try it, but your time is it. I also, um, to go back to the comment that Councilmember uh, Glazer had stated is, we don't want to pay our employees to do this, but you're. A lot of times you're interacting with city residents when you're doing it. The problem would be is if we have city residents that are not part of this. So is there any restriction for, is it only the city of Now Then can be members of this? Meaning they live in or anybody can be a member?
It's a public page, so anybody can access it. And it will be linked on the website as well. So if someone wants to. Follow the page and get notifications from us, then they'll be able to click it on the website. It'll take them there, they subscribe, but it's, it's a completely. Public.
I would feel much more comfortable if it was residents and they were interacting, because that would, that would make me feel really good, but.
Yeah.
We could have people, I would state that are members and commenting on there and that, I I don't, I don't see that adding a lot of value.
Sure, and I'll, I'll bring it back to like the Saint Francis post where it was, we are a super small community. So like, when we have events, like. For example, the craft sale that they do here, um, the farmer's market and such, those are, those all attract residents from people who are not from Now Then as well. So that's why those are made public and that's why, like, for example, I live in Bethel, but I follow Saint Francis because I go to a lot of their events. That's kind of why that would be open.
So, first one uh, that we have up is uh, number four here, which is the resolution for this city of Now Then's social media policy. So any additional discussion just on the policy and then we can make a motion on that. So, does the policy specifically state, and I have read this, but I don't remember if it says, does it specifically say comments are going to be on as part of our policy?
It, I believe the wording is if comments are allowed.
Do we know a page that's on, anybody?
Um, I don't, off the top of my head, I think it's. Toward the end, there should be, you should see like a bullet point list of con- of restrictions about what you can and cannot.
Does have restrictions about comments that can.
Yep, and then it's above that, I believe, the paragraph above that.
So, just another question is. We have, I have two copies in my book. One was the previous approved one. Is it the back one that is the updated one?
Yes, it's whatever.
The other one says two thousand eighteen on.
Yeah.
Or is that one that says twenty twenty five? I just want to make sure I'm on that spot. So I, I just want to be clear about what we're approving here is the policy. Does that include comments or not? Because that could be.
Yeah, and I apologize, I don't remember the exact wording. I believe it had just said if comments are allowed, then these are the restrictions. To um, delete them if necessary.
Reading this two days ago doesn't help you when it comes into the spot with four pages right here.
I think the only spot that it mentions comments is above that bulleted list. Of.
That just says that they're going to be removed if they fall into this category though.
Got it.
So I'm not seeing anything specific to comments on or comments off. It's just a general social media policy.
Yeah.
So, can we get a motion for uh, ten A four? Which is to approve the resolution for the social media policy. As it stands. Say, you got a call for Brian?
Yes, motion to.
Motion to approve?
Updated social media policy.
To the updated social media policy. Is anybody second?
Mary has her thumb.
I would second that motion.
All right. So I'm going to start in reverse order like we did in the beginning. This case, uh, Councilmember Glazer, would you uh? We've already got the motion to approve, but we have to do roundtable, so what is your vote, sir?
Aye.
Aye. Councilmember Brian.
Aye. Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
And I am also an aye. So motion carries. So number four is complete. Moving on to number five. Approve the resolution to create an official Facebook site for the city of Now Then, provide information to residents and direct them to the city website. So you've proposed that comments are on. So let's take the motion that way first with comments on. If that. Is not approved, then we can relook at it. I I think that's the best way to do it. Unless you guys recommend something different. I don't know how to better do that. Because she's proposed with comments on, so I think we have to do um, the motion as, as stated as she presented it.
Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Councilmember Glazer.
So if if we're to, if if somebody's to make a motion to approve this. Um, and we talked about a uh, a trial period of ninety days to collect data. Should that? Be in. The resolution.
Yes.
So.
Yes, so it wouldn't be as it stands. It needs to be written in there that we would try it for ninety days or a hundred and eighty days or something to that effect. So are we on page, resolution approved, the Now Then Facebook? So it would have to be. Go ahead, Councilmember Ryan. Uh, so it would have to be amended to state that, that it would be for a trial period.
Just being part of the motion that we would, the motion can, the motion, the motion can change to.
Okay, so just change it to the motion and then, okay.
Um, I think Mary would like to say something.
Mary, Councilmember Rainville.
So, ba- based on the conversations, I would move. Resolution twenty twenty five, number to be determined. To approve the making and and um. Making live, uh, city of Now Then Facebook page with comments. And at a ninety day. Calendar date. We would look at. How much time this has consumed of staff, if we've had issues. That need to be addressed. But also, I would add that if staff. Finds that within thirty days, it's, if the fan and something's wrong, that they come back to us sooner.
Is that a motion, Mary? Or was that a comment?
That's a motion.
That was a motion. Okay, so we got a motion from Councilmember Rainville. Anybody like to second that motion? So, that was to add on it. It's a ninety days, uh, it it's relooked at. Um, and we need to do an RCA for that so we can review it. Uh, and in thirty days, if anything happened within thirty days, they would bring it up to us.
And Mr. Mayor.
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. uh, Councilmember Glazer has seconded that. Go ahead, Councilmember Rainville.
And and that there were, and I may have missed it, but that comments are allowed on the, on the Facebook.
Yeah, no, that was implied in your, in your comments. That's where the ninety days comes from. Second that. All right, so we will go do a roundtable vote. This time I will start with Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
How do you vote? Councilmember Brian.
Nay.
Nay. Councilmember Glazer.
Nay.
Okay, um, so at that point, we've got two nays, the motion fails. And we voted on it, so I'm going to ask a little bit because Jane's not real experienced at this. So since it.
What do you vote?
Um, I would vote aye. Since it failed, can you change the motion and try it again? Something, something, so. Is there another motion that somebody would like to present um, that would be acceptable? And I'll ask you two because we got a name.
Mr. Mayor. I realize that that I seconded Councilmember Rainville's motion. Um, I just keep going back to um, you know, the constituent that I I engaged with last night and today. Um, that has concerns about having comments live and. And and. I need, I need to ta- take that position that. I would, I would rather have a trial period and see if, if, see what the engagement is like, if if we're getting subscribers without comments. Um, I'm assuming that messaging is still live where people can um, can contact. the administrator of the Facebook page through messaging. Is that correct?
Um, if we want it to be, I think there it's, it will be, it will work so they can message, but we won't respond to any of them. Is what normal practices from everyone else. I think they said that out of all of the messages that, th- this is the communications group that I'm referring to. Um, they said that maybe they respond to five percent of them and that's if it's a specific question, but no, we won't be actively responding to messages.
So they respond to comments to a post, but they his traditionally historically, based on percentages, don't respond to instant messages through messaging.
Yeah, they had said that they don't often get a lot of them, and if they are, it would be like um where where is the council meeting held tonight? And if so, a lot of those responses would be a copy and paste, um for a lot of questions, actually, even including ones on the post would be a copy and paste. Um, hey, thanks for your, thanks for your message. Please visit our city website with the link here for more information. And that would be the response to any question that could be answered through the website, because ultimately we want to refer them to the website. Like, I'm not gonna spend time researching a question for them and typing up a response and responding to them on that social media when we could refer them to the web, to the website where that information is kept. So we would have a copy and paste response to most questions that would just say a little friendly, thanks for your message, here's the website.
Would you guys like to start a different motion, maybe with comments off?
Sorry, I um thank you. I would just like to say reference again that if if we wanna look at both ways, um I would really prefer if we try it to start with the comments on first because it is gonna new pa- gonna be a brand new page. And the way the algorithm works, we are most likely to get good numbers with a following if we start with that interaction and then take it away versus starting with no interaction and then starting some. The numbers statistically with starting a page like that, I'm gonna get higher numbers if we start with the comments on.
I I believe you covered that in in the presentation, so thank you. So would you guys like to make a motion?
Mister Mister Mayor, I'll make a motion to um uh reapprove the uh making of a city now then Facebook page with the comments turned off. And um we can review it in ninety days if we wanna um re- revisit uh that and to look at potentially turning it back on.
Okay, so it's number five as written with the review in ninety days, comments off. Hey, does anybody like to second that?
I'll second that.
That meet your intent. All right, Councilmember Rainville, we're gonna do roll call vote.
So Mister Mayor, I have a question on the.
Councilmember Rainville, you got a comment?
I I have a comment. I I agree with Lexi in that how do we know how successful we are in a ninety day period? If we're not allowing people to comment. And and a comment does not always necessitate another response. We could Lexi could post that the meeting agenda is here, click on it, and somebody could say, that's great, thank you. She isn't gonna respond, oh, you're most welcome. So not all posts are gonna generate wanna comment and then second a comment that needs to be responded to. And I I think the more we talk about this, the more important it is to be able to communicate with the residents and that a communication entails comments.
Hey, thank you. It is a tool for communication.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Um, I've also seen on the El River Facebook page that they literally said don't be posting certain things here because like complaints, because they started to get overwhelmed with comments and they're going, we already have this process to um on the on the website to to take take care of that. So now we're having to steer people away from Facebook back to the website. Um, which which seems like that would involve a lot of staff time when um you know, that's ki- kinda what certain things are on the website to to allow for um notifications and or fill out forms and that kinda thing. So that's why I would rather just let's, let's take take the opportunity to have a Facebook page, start putting things on it. And if people wanna subscribe to it, they can, and if not I'm I'm not out to to have to wor- I'm not worrying about our numbers and how many people are subscribing to it. It's are we able to have a means to put information out there for residents to see.
I think we've had very good discussion on this. I would like your motion is still on the table. It's already been second. Uh, Councilmember Rainville, I'd like uh to round table, uh not roll call vote. Uh, what would you like to vote on? Councilmember Ryan's motion.
Nay.
Nay.
Councilmember Brian.
Aye.
Councilmember Glazer.
Aye.
And I will be an aye. So this is my motion is gonna pass, we will have Facebook. Uh, we will have no comments, and I would like to review in ninety days and see if there's anything that's changed. At least it's a starting point. Okay, moving on to the next one. Um, this is number ten A six, which is discuss agenda review meetings. I'm gonna turn this over to Natalie. This is one that um you and Frank had talked about. Um, and tell us a little bit about it and what we should be doing or not doing. What's your recommendation?
It is. This is something that Mister Boyle had recommended um that he does with many other cities. He um does a meeting with two of the council members together with himself to go through the council packet so that we can have a dialogue to make sure that the council members absolutely understand everything that's in it. And then if they have any questions uh ahead of time that we can address them um so that we don't have to have as long a discussions. Um, obviously, we can't have more than two at a time, so it could be Zoom like one week. It could be uh Mister Glazer and Mister Brian, and then next week it could be um the other two, and then we could kinda mix it up depending upon time. It could be in person, it could be um online. It's just something that is really up to you guys if you'd like to do um. He said he tries to keep up to about a half an hour, meaning that if you got the packet on Thursday night, that on Monday morning, we could have a quick little conversation over the agenda and the items that you reviewed over the weekend, and if there was anything else that needed more research. He just said it would help uh facilitate the meetings to move a little bit faster and we wouldn't have as long a discussions.
Any open discussion on this one?
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
That's very similar to kinda what we had way back when, when we'd had work sessions ahead of time to try to get most of the discussion out of the way. Um, and that um that was suggested in in probably a different flavor by Administrator Lainer to meet with council members to go over things. So is it a rotating? Um, or it can be, it's not two designated council members, it could be any two at any time.
Correct, because people schedule changes and stuff, let's not do, you know, and it's nice to get, you know, different council members together because we are supposed to be working as a team and working for the residents, so.
And is there you know, I know usually the packet comes out Thursday. Is there any, depending on the timing of everything, are we relatively still gathering information up until getting a packet out, or would it, would there be some value even in trying to go through the packet on like even Wednesday or Thursday ahead of time?
It would be kinda nice to try to go through everything before it's actually out. Um, cuz as you noticed today, you you got some emails today even regarding some items, so um part of it is it's it's year end and we still have new staff that's still training, so. But um yeah, either we could certainly do that, just take the draft event uh agenda and go through it and see if it's something uh that all the council members still wanna discuss, or if they don't, if it's something I can table until another month. I would like most of our agenda items to, I mean, I would like our agendas to get a lot smaller than what they are.
Yeah, no, I like, I, so I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea, you can save lots of time, even staff time and council time even ahead of the meeting, just to kinda iron out any issues that may come up.
That's exactly the intent is 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 number one, they're they're clear, everybody's up to date with where we're at with them. So we talked about it, we can dive in for a few minutes, but you're trying to limit it to a half hour. But good opportunity if there's questions on it. I think this could help us be more organized. So I support this. I think it makes sense. Go ahead, Councilmember, please.
So I I was able to, I was past, I was kind of a guinea pig, um being new and um Natalie offered to, you know, asked about this and offered to sit down with me. We sat in the conference room for I don't know, twenty minutes or so. Um, it's very helpful, uh especially um with some of the uh the code enforcement and uh CU, CUP issues that we're having um in a couple areas around the city, I was able to ask some questions. And so I I would find this a benefit.
Okay, any other discussion on this one?
Mister Mayor.
The council member, Brian.
Do you actually want, do you want us to approve this procedure from a council perspective or just implement it without a motion?
I don't believe we need a motion for this. I think this is something that can be done. There was not an RCA for this that I'm tracking.
No.
So I don't think we need a motion. I think we just need people on board with it and it's not like we can call everybody up and have a meeting to find out if we wanna do this. Is there one time? Uh, Councilmember Rainville, are you uh good with doing this?
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay, so uh I think we're all on board with that and we would appreciate the time to get us organized beforehand. All right, number seven. Um, this is just a discussion point, but the need for working council sessions. Um, this was brought up to say, one, our council meetings are going really long and we're already over the two hour mark. Uh, because it's January, we couldn't fix this, but really it's looking at how do we do different going forward? My chair is like rolling all over the place. I apologize. I have to put both feet on the floor. Um, the big item was is it was brought up to say, should we be doing working session meetings? Or should we have two city council meetings? Uh, and there's benefits um for going both ways, but if there's things that need to be approved, if you label it a working session meeting, you can't approve them cuz it's only working session. But if you just said, hey, we'll do two city council meetings, you could approve things that need, so we can affect it in a timely manner. Uh, and both of which would be open to the public, so that's not the issue, both of which would be recorded. But I think by just labeling two city council meetings, it gives us a flexibility to do everything. Um, so any discussion on that um or perspective? If we if we'd like it, we would have to talk about what dates um that work. Any uh discussion or debate on this one?
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember Brian.
Pretty confident Old Grove has at least two meetings a month. I think Saint Francis does as well. Um, I would agree if there's any, there's any ways to, so we're not having three to four hour meetings, that there's definitely benefits to that. So i- if it's two council, two shorter council meetings or a work session, I know in the past, again, we've had work sessions. We had work sessions scheduled the Thursday before council meeting. Um, so I think uh I'm I'm at least willing to try it for a while and see if, and see how it goes. Cuz I even when we were running into this meeting with um paying bills that we ended up having um a couple extras, even special meetings to approve some bills.
Yeah, and Mister Mayor.
City Administrator Johnson.
Even today, I sent you some extras because of the timing of the sheriff's contract that came in and um collaborative planning and that we got the trailer back today. Little things like that, it would be nice to have it cuz if it, we had a second one scheduled today, I or not, you know, another one scheduled, I would have just held off and put those in an entire pocket.
And what might make sense for us, uh Councilmember Rainville has got her hand up.
Mister Mayor, I I agree with going to two council meetings. I believe it'll be easier for staff to put packets together and the instances where like we had today where additional information comes out and they have to go back and keep updating what's on the website. And and we don't always have that current information. Um, doing work sessions, um I think it was talked about, it was that if it's not on the agenda, you can't vote on it. So um by having two formal council meetings, I think will have benefit to us um that we can be uh that be less on the agenda, easier to prepare the agenda, and then shorter meetings.
Mister Mayor. Councilperson Glazer.
I still see received that there's probably also gonna be be the need. And we're adding another council meeting, but there's probably gonna be be the need for work sessions, for instance. Um, you know, when when uh um Natalie submitted questions to all of us for the the twenty twenty five council regarding what would our, do we have any specific goals for for staff? M- my position on that was I res- I didn't respond with any bullet points like all of you did because I'm of the, I'm of the belief um that that's something that we need to come together as a council. So are we also gonna have work sessions on top of, cuz we're not gonna, we're gonna not gonna have a a scheduled city council meeting where we sit and talk about what the individual goals are um for for the year for the staff.
So to address that, if we did a council meeting, it could be on the agenda, we would say, we would come together and figure out the goal. So that can be done in a work session or it could be done in the city council meeting. Uh, a normal city council meeting. The advantage of the city council meetings is you can vote and it would be a published agenda. So we just put it as agenda item and we could talk about it. But it gives you that benefit. So if you label a work session, you only can do work sessions, it's more like grinding the sausage. That's all you can do there. So in that case, we could do it in a working session or in a city council meeting, either one.
Mister Mayor. Um, Councilmember Glazer, there is ways that you can do the, you know, over the past six months, we've had multiple meetings, some that were work sessions and some that were meetings. So it takes the mayor to con- or to call a meeting, or it takes two council members to call a meeting. So if there is just a time where you think we just wanna talk about the goals for two hours and we could call a work session just to talk about the goals and then make an objective.
Make it specific to that if you wanted to.
Specific and then we could, you know, just give us direction on that.
Mister Mayor.
Councilmember, councilperson Glazer. I'm gonna get this down, Pat.
In in your experience in corporate leadership, you you've, I I assume on an annual basis draft goals for your staff.
Absolutely.
How long does it take you to draft goals for yourself?
So it's um staff would be, it's multiple functional areas. I would say an hour per position concept. So in this case, we'd be drafting them for the uh the city administrator, but I would say I can do a fairly good sketch out in an hour. But that's per position enough. So if I have seven positions, I'm working on goals all day.
Right. So I just wanna keep that in perspective that it, you know, establishing goals for for an entire staff is not gonna happen in one council meeting.
My, it could be that we call, uh could be a special session or a working session as well if we agree upon that just to look at the goal side of the house. Trying to look holistic on this and say, you know, could that be done in a in a a second council meeting? It could be, but it might not be enough. Um, but the second council meeting as we go forward, if you look, uh we're the, what, the second Tuesday of the month? Is that where we are right here? We know the fourth Tuesday of the month is when the planning and zoning meets. So is there another time where we could say, we could collectively agree and say, if we planned on this day, we put it on our calendars and say, yes, we can meet uh and make a second council meeting out of it. Now, we might have to do additional for goals, so. But is that something that we would put on the table that would work for us? Councilmember Brian, you have any comments on that?
Like I said, I think at least it it'd be something that if we're gonna do it, then it's like, just like the Facebook, it would be worth setting up. You know, or reviewing it in six months and going, okay, is it making progress or making progress with it, or do we go back to one meeting?
Absolutely. It's something that can be reviewed. If something's not adding value, absolutely. We need to ask the question, why are we doing it and stop doing it if it's not adding value? So is there a a day, a day a month other than today? Do we wanna try to do it before the council meeting? The Thursday was brought up before the council meeting? Or is this something we should look at ten days later and do the ten days from now? I'm gonna look at my phone, even though we're not supposed to, but I need to look at a calendar. So just say today's the fourteenth, where we look at uh maybe next Thursday, the twenty third, and set that as our standard day for a second council meeting? Is that what we wanna do? Councilmember Rainbow, you got your councilperson Rainbow, you have your hand up.
So Mister Mayor, um I would, I I would prefer that we stay on Tuesdays. Our council meetings have typically been Tuesdays. And maybe we think of the first and the third Tuesday of the month. And then there's enough time period in between that staff to accumulate what is needed for that second meeting. And then there's less time then into the, to the first meet again of the next month, and so we can stay more consistent. So I would suggest we go to the first and the third Tuesdays of the month. And leave um P and Z as the fourth Tuesday.
City Administrator Johnson.
I would just like to make a comment that um you could make the first one more for discussions. I would like to make a comment that um, you could make the first one more for discussions. That we could do on things or and pay the bills that have to be paid. And on the third one would be where we would get our subcontractor um, updates. Because especially when it ends up on a one, two, three, four, five of the day, of the month. Um, I can't get those reports until just before, sometimes they come out even after the pack has gone out because it's too close to the first of the month. So it, that would make perfect sense for me as to the third, whatever the second meeting is, would be for our subcontractors. However, I will also caution that many of our contractors are already booked on, you know, many nights of the week for other cities. Um, if we change the second one, um, we may or may not be able to have some contractors um, present.
We just approved the, the dates to keep them on the, the second Tuesday of the month. I, I like Tuesdays also, but I'd be very concerned if we change it at this point because everybody's calendar is locked in on that one.
Correct.
Council member Brian.
We have meetings the first Tuesday, I will not be at any of them. That's the wa, that's the watershed night. And out of every time that when we set our watershed dates, the only city where there's a conflict is us. So by, by moving the meeting from the first Tuesday to the second Tuesday, so those are, those currently are locked in as well. So the first Tuesday might not be the.
So ma- maybe we do this, maybe we table this. Um, is there another day this month we could meet and just call it a special session? We can talk about the goal keys that would work for everybody and then we could bring this specifically back up. And talk about and see if we can figure out something that would work. Council member Rainbow, you got your hand up again.
So Mister Mayor, an op, an option would be the second and fourth Tuesdays and change the P and Z meeting. I, I think that whatever Tuesday we go with, there is going to be some conflict with our consultants. Because Tuesdays are typical council meeting nights. And we'll just have to work through those.
Can we do this? Um, can I just ask the group if we can meet on the, I'm going to say Thursday, the twenty third? Is it possible we could meet that night to pick this back up and finish this discussion point and then also talk about goals? Is that possible? Would you guys be available on the twenty third? Or is there a different day that, so we don't keep, continue to drag this meeting out to figure out?
Oh, I'm available.
You're available, alright.
Me too.
Council member, council person Rainbow, are you available on Thursday, the twenty third?
Yes, I am.
Alright, so if we can do that, do we need a motion for that or are we good? I don't know the answer to this. Alright, so it's going to be a, uh, it'll be a, a working group meeting, so we can talk through um, one. See what dates would work for us, how we can make this work. And then the second piece is to establish goals uh, for the city administrators, so we can talk in person. So your point is very well taken, council person, please. Okay, so if that's table, let's move on to number eight was to talk about the priority and goal list. Are we good with?
Just want to clarify from the meeting, are we saying six o'clock again?
I, I would say six o'clock. I think it's a good starting time. Council person Rainbow, the six o'clock work for you on the twenty third?
Yes.
I'm just putting it in my calendar so I don't forget myself.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Trying to keep them less than two hours. Council person Rainbow, go ahead.
So Mister Mayor, so um, these goals are not just goals that we want for staff. It's our goals on what we want to see accomplished. Staff is going to take care of those for the most part, but it's what are our goals as the elected officials? So people do need to come back with what their goals are as an elected official for the city. And then staff will implement those.
Yes, ma'am. So it's goals for not only um, what we want to accomplish as a council, but also goals for the staff. But good clarification, council member Rainbow?
Yes.
Thank, thank you. So I would like to um, basically, if we're going to cover our goals in the meeting on the, whatever date we just set, that I can't see on my phone because it's locked. Um, I would like to table number eight, so ten A eight, which is city council priority goal list. Along with expectations until we come back in our next meeting. Is everybody good with that? Council person, uh, Rainbow, are you good with that also?
Yes, I am, sir.
Okay, so next one we can move on to is number nine. Can't find it here. Here we go. Okay, so now we're going to move on to ten A, number nine, uh, discuss the RCA for filling the vacant council seat. And then the next one would be to approve, uh, approve the resolution that goes along with that process. Uh, who would like to start out with comments for debate or discussion on this? I think everybody's read the RCA. Council member Rainbow, would you like to start?
Yes. Yes, Mister Mayor and Council. Now then has found themselves in a position of having to appoint or fill a vacancy. Um, we are not alone in this. As we know, Anoka has got the same thing and so does Ice Santi. Um, and then Orono, which was in the packet. They've all gone to a process that talks about doing um, inter, application and interviews. In order to find out who is interested in the position. So I had put together this piece um, earlier. On page one oh three of the request for council action, there's an appointment schedule. We would have to decide if those are the dates we're interested in using for the, if we go with this. That these would be the dates we would use for the process. And then um, we would have to determine. My pages are in black and white and not color, so I can't always see what I'm looking at. Um, we would have to determine how many interview, how many finalists we would interview, or would we interview them all? That's on page one oh two. As far as um, how, how many we want to interview? Do we want to interview them all? If you get a hundred, that's going to be pretty cumbersome. I, I don't see that happening. Um, but we have to, as a council, decide how many of the people that apply do we want to interview? And then we will also have to decide the process to use for moving forward a name from the finalists to vote on.
You've got it all laid out in your agenda or on the next page with dates, so deadline for applications. Council review, tentative interview. To bring it to you guys anymore, I, I should say, council member Rainbow, do you have any more? Um, any more things other than what you've written? Any more comments?
No, I do not.
I know there's additional information in there about Orono and okay.
Mister Mayor.
Council person, please.
This was something of, you know, that was of contention uh, that was addressed in the December meeting, which precipitated two council members getting up and walking out and eliminating the quorum, thus ending um, the meeting. Uh, there were, I think fourteen written responses that, uh, at the time, city administrator Laner shared with the council members and it was also then um, included with the uh, the meeting packet and posted online. The overwhelming response at that time was that the residents, the, the voters of, of Now Then wanted to have a say in this process, which required, which would require a, an election and a vote. It is, since then, there has been um, continued dialogue with constituents. And the overwhelming response has been that residents want to be able to vote in order to fill this, this council position. Um, and uh, I've been, forgive me, but um, I was watching a, a Facebook post in regards to uh, that uh, this notifying people that monitor the, the, the real Now Then bulletin board that this topic is back up for discussion this evening. And the overwhelming response again is uh, residents want to be able to vote on this vacant council seat. Uh, I'm, please, I'm not done, Mister Mayor. Um, it going, and if, if, I appreciate your comments earlier this evening. Um, and, and I want to uh, touch on one of the things that, that you mentioned that um, is important to you and your servant leadership to the, to the residents of Now Then. And that's to listen to the residents of Now Then. And the overwhelming I don't understand why, I understand that people thought that it was, it was, the process was going too fast last month. I am, I am not in favor of council member Rainville's RCA, the way that is written, that essentially in the end, follows the statute that we could have followed last month, where in the event that there's a tie, this is the one unique situation in, in within our government, where you, the mayor, is given the deciding vote. Folks didn't want that last month. The, the residents have spoken, they want an election. And I, that's, that's what perplexes me, is we're, we're at the same place we were last month and the residents aren't getting their say in this. I yield back.
City Administrator Johnson.
Council member Blazer, you just referred to the Facebook page in the comments, how you saw the, what the residents wanted, and I apologize, I just thought it was kind of funny. So I do apologize.
Well, I, I stated earlier in, in the meeting that, that I monitor, you know, the, it's the real Now Then bulletin board Facebook page for the comments. But I, I also commented that, that oftentimes people get off in the weeds.
Yes, you did.
I, I, I don't, I, I want to state here now that I do not comment on that page because I don't want to get bought, involved in the negative, you know.
Yes.
Um, and oftentimes people aren't always dealing in fact, but this is, this is where, you know, residents have stated that overwhelmingly that they want to be able to vote on this position.
Thank you, council, council person Brian.
And I'll, I'll line that line, it, it, it's um, in order, in order to have that special election, we have to look at putting in ordinance and ordinance together that, that um, so that, so that having that special election can get approved and, and um, last month, when it came up, it was shortly after an election, so that's where the, the process was being followed. But yes, I would agree with council member Glazer, if the residents are looking for a special election, this RCA as written isn't including, even if it's just drafting or putting the ordinance together so that we have it, um, knowing that um, it would take time to put a special election together, that someone theoretically could be appointed to serve until that a special election actually happens, so that we can have with the fifth person on the council. And the comment was also made um, last month where we've been doing this fine with four council members. So if, let's, let's take a look at what's going to be involved to um, put the process in place, have an ordinance so that we can even look at having a special election. And the count, and part of the um, information provided to us was that um, of the, the two main cities between Anoka and Ixani, one of them is going to reappoint, the other one is planning on having a special election. So um, I would um, not be able to um, approve this um, procedure as drafted, um, that was presented to us tonight.
Um, I'll put some comments in there. So if you look at the, the statute, statute for four twelve dot zero two. So if I look at uh, two A vacancy, two A, which is called vacancy, and it states on here, and there might be some different forms floating around. I pulled this off the state website, but it's slightly different than the one that was in our packet. And I'll just read it for you. Except as otherwise provided, in subdivision two B, a vacancy in the office shall be filled by the council appointment until an election is held as provided in the subdivision. And then we'll talk about the case of a tie. That's not what's important, but this is a council, uh, the office shall fill the shall be filled by council appointment. So the only way to do council appointment is to have a vote to fill. So it also states a special election shall be held at or before the next regular city election. So a special election has to be done either way. It's just a matter of when. That's the way I read this. So I, I think that a special election has to be included in here. If it's not um, specifically stating, now, when is that special election? That could be what the discussion is, but a special election has to be done. And to do that, we have to draft an ordinance. But either way, it says special election shall be held, which means it will be held. Okay, so I, I uh, council member Rainville.
So Mister Mayor, um, I've not watched Facebook today. Um, so I don't know what or who has commented on what on either of the pages. Um, I don't have with me um, at the moment, without digging through some files, the comments that came in prior to the December meeting. So I can't make a decision based on what somebody has said, that somebody said in the Facebook and, and, and papers I don't have in front of me. Um, our ordinances do not call for a special election. In order to do that, as it's stated, we're going to have to draft a special election, draft an ordinance. Post it, have a public hearing, I'm assuming, that I don't know for sure. Um, and then we need to also find in the budget, I, I think Natalie said it was between six and eight thousand dollars to have an election. Um, I know there are people that have said, well, people will pay for it. Well, you know what? People already pay taxes. They don't need to pay for a special election. We're not doing bake sales for that kind of stuff. And Natalie, in her information, we're looking based on dates that are specified by the state when we can have an election. We probably aren't looking until November anyway, if I'm, if I'm reading Natalie's information correctly. So the council can decide how they want to appoint this person to fill the vacancy. It's difficult to come to a, a conclusion because it's a two, two vote. If it doesn't pass, then the mayor gets to decide. And yes, we're back in what we had conversations on in December. Um, but I feel more confident in the fact that this is now more of an open process than it was going to be in December. And we got a resignation that Thursday night of, or Friday night of Thanksgiving weekend, and the mayor wanted to appoint on two, on Monday morning or Monday evening at the meeting, when people didn't even know about it. And even by the tenth, there were, that was not truly public knowledge. There's now more public knowledge and um, people have the ability to put their name in the hat if they're interested in doing it. The council has to decide what, what they want to do. Do you want us put towards the money to put, put, put an ordinance together and sixty, eight thousand dollars to do a special election? Or do you want to just appoint somebody to carry out the remainder of that two-year term? What's left of that two-year term?
Well, City Administrator Johnson, you have the dates we're talking about.
Uh, yeah, those are in your package.
If you can find them, um. I, I do want to bring one more thing up, so I did uh, without council approval, just asking, do we have residents? That want to participate in this? And so I did get five people that filled out an application, now this is not approved by the council, this was. What I wanted to make sure we got together that to understand if there was interest that people would be interested in. And I can come back and say that five people turned in an application uh, that said they would be interested. So the one process that Councilmember Rainville is talking about is doing a. Uh, it would be an open period of time, so anybody that's interested, they can put in an application um. And then we could, we would interview that process, but if I go back to this um. Yeah, so I don't. Thank you, page one oh five. I saw it, but I don't know.
Do you want the date?
Yes, so say what is the next date, what does that look like for us?
So our next deadline to get ready to do an election would be. February eighteenth with the soonest being a May thirteenth. Election. Uh, or May twentieth with an August twelfth election. And I would like to state in there if the council had taken into consideration. That in March, we have our city audit. And I'm trying to close them here, but, but I mean, I'll work it out. If that's what we need to do. Um, I also did want to point out that I Santee was only doing a special election for the mayor. They are only doing appointment for the council member because the mayor was over two years and the. Um, council member was under two years.
So cities that have done the appointments is I Santee and then Anoka just opened theirs up.
That is correct.
And they're opening it for open application process, they're not going back and doing a special election for it.
The city of Hanover also did an appointment.
Okay. Alright, so appointment is what others are doing. Um, not saying right or wrong or indifferent, one of the things I want to talk about is the cost. So we estimated the cost, I don't know where that estimate comes from, from seven to ten thousand. So this is important, but what we budgeted for um, for the election was over twenty thousand and you have to follow the same process, correct?
I do, this year's budget in the election fund is fifteen hundred dollars and that's just our annual fee that we have to pay. To the county for the use of all the machines, so we will have to pay for um, all the balloting, the attorney to sign off, the publishing. Um, all the early voting.
And how many days do you have to be open for?
Forty-six days.
Forty-six days it.
I wouldn't anticipate that a special election would be quite as busy as our general election is, but I do have to have staff available to take. Um, the early voting, whether it's with the regular ballot. Or waiting till the direct voting to get to put it right into the machine and. Either way, you know, I will do whatever the council wants to do and we'll make it work, so.
Certainly, but forty-six days open, we budgeted twenty thousand last year for the elections. We have to be open the same duration of time, so I don't know how the cost is only seven to ten, now you have less people. That we're voting for, but that's my struggle right now is to say it's going to be seven to ten, we just spent twenty last year.
Last year we had three elections, so this would only be one.
So it's only one, okay, so that's maybe where that.
Right, we aren't going to have to have a primary, you don't have to have a early president or anything.
But the primary was, that didn't have a report on primary, did it?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it did on that too, okay. Alright, so cost is one factor, there's no doubt about it, um, others have done it, other. Questions and comments that we need to talk about. I'll look back, any other additional comments that you would like to make?
Well, I've already heard some, some kind, some. Information that would need clarity because I've heard that we would have. Um, that we'd have a special election in November, but if the, if the, the position is actually a two-year term, which would be up and um. Twenty, so there, so there'd be, the, the election would be in twenty-six and that would end, be ending that term, so that it wouldn't technically be a special election then.
That's one, that's one of the techniques on it, yes.
Right, but if we're going to have a special election, which it seemed, appears to me that a resident wants, then we need to figure out how to, how to work that into the.
The special election can be held at or before the regu, next regular election. But it can be considered a special election even though it's during a regular, so that's where.
But it'd be the.
In twenty-six.
But in twenty-six would be a regular election, because that term would be up, so it's not a special.
So special election shall be held at or before, so it's at, okay, maybe it's just semantics at that point. When I'm considering a special election happening at the regular, so maybe it's just a regular election.
So, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember, no, City Administrator Johnson, go ahead.
So uh, Councilmember Bryant, to answer that question. Um, Mr. Hunt down at the Anoka County Elections has explained that to me multiple times where. We do have to hold that special election, it will be on the ballot to fill that vacancy for the rest of November and December. And then it will also be on the ballot for a four-year term. Because statute states, so that's how that would work.
So it is a special election.
It would be, we have to hold.
Either way, it's a special election.
Two months term, right.
So the other way to, to take a look at it, let's go back to the dates that Natalie proposed, because it's not going to happen tonight. The way that'll get submitted for. Um, but if you say, hey, the special election is. What we all believe has to happen, the soonest we could do it looks like is May thirteenth. Now, would that be the start date of the forty-six days is May thirteenth? Do you have any idea?
And then go backwards, yep, because that would be the day of the election.
So it'd be like.
Yeah, the election date would be May thirteen, twenty twenty-five. And you can appoint somebody from now until then, if you'd like. Or you can. Appoint for the two years until the election. Um. Will do whatever council wants us to do.
Right. So. The go, the goal, I think always is to be as transparent as possible, I. And this is, this is my feeling, I'm not a person about power and control, that's not what's important to me. And, and I, I, I state that no different than transparency, these are important things to our community. Here's the piece that I struggle with, and it's a combination of what uh, councilperson uh, Rainville said, where we can have a process where we can. Say it's an open position, doesn't cost our city any money, we have an open position, anybody that would like to apply can put an application in it. We'll do an interview process for that. I think to me, and then it's not costing our city additional taxpayer dollars. Our taxpayers, and I heard from a lot of them as I was going door to door. Don't want our taxes to go up, we would be spending additional money for that. One part of the process, and it might not be written in here, but we could talk about. Is if it's important, we could have that interview process, it would be open to the public and they could ask questions also.
It has to be open to the.
It has to be open, okay, but they could also ask questions, so I think we can do an open process without doing an election right now, that's where I'm going. And it's a process where we're making that vote, the four of us, with the input of others, before we take a vote, because we would interview, we would. Uh, this is just what I'm thinking, so I'm just talking through it openly, but um, we could gather feedback and we could do that. So then we're not just appointing, we're doing an election process and we're appointing as it comes. And I would like us to be in consensus on that if at all possible, now I just said earlier, we don't have to be in consensus on it. Again, because it's all about bringing deliberate argument, but that would be great if we can come in consensus with. One person, the four of us and say, alright, now we don't have to take that seven to ten thousand dollars, the time from the staff for this forty-six days. We didn't even talk about that, it's, it's a small piece of it, but it, it's important, the staff, how much did you get done during election time, that's the other thing I wanted to bring up.
During the general election, we got very little done because it was only two of us.
Because it's forty-six days.
But it was a general election, not, you know.
It would be, it would, this would be less. This would be less, there's no doubt, and I can't even say it's the same as a general election, because it's not, it's less, but. Couldn't we have a process like that where we're filling it, where we've got the residents providing input? That, that's really my question coming back to you. What are your thoughts?
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilmember Glazer.
Again, I'm going to state that the overwhelming response from going, going back to. People that responded and writing to Administrator Lainer. To constituents that I've received emails from. To constituents that I've spoken on the telephone with for um, extended periods of time. Uh, to the response to a Facebook post this evening. The overwhelming response is we want to, we want to be able to elect that position. The, and. I want to go back to the comments that I made last month. And uh. You, Councilmember Rainville sent me a very, you know, a uh, thought provoking email that, that I read and took seriously. But the one thing that she failed to address. On the comments that I made was my question to her is why are you? You, you don't want our current, our current mayor at the time, Mayor Pilon, to have the final vote. In, in the event of a two, two tie, but you're willing to give it to the new mayor. And she didn't address that in the email to me. And that's still a concern of mine today that I addressed last month. And because that is still in this RCA, that in the event of a two, two tie, one person gets to decide who that council member is. And I'm not in favor of it.
Councilperson Brian.
I, I, I think it, it all comes back to, if, if, yeah, I, I would agree. Um, there was enough contention at the previous meeting that, that people wanted to wait for the new council, well, if it came down to that, that. Appointment because, because the council couldn't come into agreement, then we're back to one person appointing. Where if we go out and have, have the special election, then. All the residents have, have the choice to decide on who's going to fill the council seat, if they choose to vote or not, that's up to them, but it, at least is um. It's giving the residents an opportunity to, to. Participate in the process, in the election process that's there for a reason, as this is an elected position. And if we have um, the ordinance in place and we have a special election date set, then yes, we could look at filling that, that position, at least temporarily, which. Um, which the state statute provides for, and then, and then we have a procedure in place because. Because, just because this is our first time running into this, doesn't mean that we're going to run, we're not going to run into this again. Um, but if we have to have that ordinance in place to at least provide the ability to possibly have a special election, we need to look, we need to at least get that part done first. And then we can look at, are we going to have a special election on a particular day, work around that process, and then if, if need be, until that special election happens, we can um, appoint a temporary person.
Councilperson Rainville, last comments.
Um. Uh, a-again, I, I can't make a decision based on information that's not in front of me. Um. My concern. In December was. It was not going to be an open process. It was a closed process, there was a specific number of council members that had. Made a decision on who they wanted to appoint, and it's not a personal issue, I, I know Ms. Olson, it, it's not personal, it's procedural. So I, I want to take the personal piece out of it, it's procedural, and at that point, the procedure was not open. It was a closed process. And my concern was that the process be open. And if council cannot come to a three-one decision on how to move forward, yes. The current mayor will be able to appoint as state statute allows. But in the meantime, the process has been open, people have been able to come, comment. Um, it wasn't going to be open and that was my concern. So I, I call the question. As to the. Request for council action that I have in front of council. And that we've discussed. Um, if I can have a second on that.
Um, if I can have a second on that.
The Councilmember Rainville is putting forth the RCA or motion to her RCA that she wrote, is there a second? Barry, we're not getting, or uh, Councilmember Rainville, we're not getting a second.
So, Mr. Mayor.
So, Mayor.
Then the next step would be.
Go ahead, Councilmember, Councilmember Rainville.
Because we don't have an ordinance. That says we have to hold a special election. The next process then is. Somebody puts together an ordinance. We get that in, in our, in our. Charter or in our rules. And then we pay for a special election that we're going to have to not pay for something else, because we didn't budget it. Um, and it can go to the, to the residents. Another option is somebody can put forth a name, if it gets three votes, it gets three votes. If it doesn't. Then it goes to the mayor.
So at, at this, at this point, let's uh, since that motion is not getting a second, uh, does somebody want to make a motion? At all at this point?
Or I'll make a motion to um, authorize staff to research what needs to be involved. Uh, to draft the ordinance to a lot, that the league is saying that we need, we, we should have, so we, so we can get that in place and then. Uh, to determine whether it can be something that um, Attorney Rupi probably has one already that can, to go. Um, and then to um, also determine if that needs to go to planning and zoning, I don't think it would have to. And then um, bring that back to council for approval.
Mr. Mayor.
Good.
Uh, that ordinance would have to be published in the paper for a certain number of time, I can't remember if it was two weeks or three weeks. And then, but no public hearing is needed because it's not a zoning issue. Um, I would request though, uh, that all of you look at the budget and find out where you want me to take that money from to pay for it.
There, there is.
Unless it's just going to come out of the general fund, I, there is some contingency money. Um, but I would like to save that for the road project in case it goes over, but we can always take it from general fund, but. It's up to you guys though, but I would like you to take a budget, I will research and bring back an ordinance. However, I would like a, a good. Um, direction as to where you want me to take it out of the budget.
I think we can discuss that at our. Where it's coming out of the budget out of our next working group meeting and we can talk about that budget piece, because it's important. Um, and you guys are going to research and then we will follow it up in uh, in March, or correction, February. It's got to be posted, so if you just project the date when we'd be looking to complete this, I don't know if anybody's done that. So let's say it's completed by the May, so we'd be looking for a special election date of twelve August.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know if, well, I will check, but I'm not sure if I have enough publication time to get the ordinance, get it approved by um. By Mr. Rupi. And to the paper for the appropriate amount of time, so I will double check on that to see how long it is that it has to be in the paper.
Sure.
Um, and I believe I can probably just get another ordinance from the league or from another city who.
We, we can have it for a February meeting, I think that would be appropriate. Um, and at that point, we, it's got to be published, it's got to go through the process, and if we can have it by May, then we can have our election in August. I think that would be a, a realistic goal for us. It's, it's very transparent, it just costs the city money, that's all.
And Mr. Mayor, may I suggest that we, do you guys have any desire to appoint someone until we can have the election? Or no?
If you look at the dates of. To appoint somebody, we, we would still go through a process where we would interview them, we're not just going to appoint, it would be an interview process. We're talking to August, we got six months. I know there's people that would be interested in it. So I, I would think that we would have an open application process to do that, and maybe in February we can do the interview, maybe it's the working council in February. And then we could potentially uh, get a consensus at that point, so it would be a short-term appointment, really is what it would be looking at. Even if it's, wait, go to so large, it would be a few months that they could work and help fill it. Um, and then the special election will be the, um, the answer to a long-term solution. Alright, so. We don't need a resolution on, or a, a, a motion on it?
We have a motion to, to get the ordinance draft.
Correct, so we, so that's where, that's my next spot, do we need uh, a motion for the ordinance? In, in this case, we're just directing staff to do it, do we need an ordinance to do that, or that can just be verbal? I don't know.
I would say we should have a motion to approve the drafting in the.
Okay, would you like to state your motion again one more time, Councilmember Brian?
Making a motion to, to, to draft uh. And to, to have staff draft an ordinance so that we can have a special election and then to. Uh, look at having that then approved by council and at the February, February meeting. And then we can continue, that's the motion.
That's the motion, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Second to that motion. We'll start the voting by roll call, I'll start with you, uh, Councilperson Glazer.
Hi.
Hi. Aye.
Councilperson Rainville. Was that a nae? Alright, I will give an aye. So we are going to move forward with the process, following up in, in February with that. Anything else that needs to be discussed today? That was our piece that we needed to work through.
Mr. Mayor. Good. I would propose that we have, I mean, it was, I was, now I'm thinking about it, looking at the old business, that we probably should add. To a work session at some point in time, how we want to handle the old business and what. Keeps things on or what moves them off, I don't know if there was anything that.
There, there is not a current process right now, it's basically parking lot items, uh, we may, maybe we can discuss that at next Thursday.
Okay.
We could add that to the agenda, please. Alright, we're going to close the meeting. Councilmember Rainville, go ahead.
Never mind.
Alright, thank you, so, January fourteenth meeting, our time is not.
I was going to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We don't have to vote on that one, right?